Let's call this meeting, let's arrange our meeting to order. Just to blow the ground rules, this is obviously a public meeting, but the purpose of it is for this board to discuss. So we don't have, we don't have an agenda item. We're inviting the public comment, those are abnormal. Twice, twice in half the meetings, so tonight we're just going to go with this. These issues on the agenda, on the agenda, which is to review our goals and objectives. Adopt, possibly adopt the major set goals if we get that far, and then review the special town meeting warrant. So I'm going to ask, we take this out of the board, let's just go with the warrant first, okay? Now, the first issue that just came up, I tried to reach out to Ellen Agro, but I think we just want to be clear that right now, I'm going to be quite a distance away out of the, out of the state and unavailable to in any way attend this meeting, since we travel. And then Mike will be out of, alright, well, I'll be, I'm gonna be, if, unless the government changes mine, I'm gonna be in Maui. And move out of the country.
I'll be here.
Right, so certainly three, three will be, but we're clearly not going to be.
I'm in Maui.
What's that?
Yeah, we'll be here.
I think it's seven hours, see, the seven hour, I think it's seven hours behind. I think it was based on what time somebody called me the last time I was there. So, but, if, if, obviously you all have a copy of this, and, and the reason we're doing this is the warrant closed today. So, obviously, you don't have to have the numbers in place yet from the publishers, but, you know, we can't really subtract from this. Sorry, articles, some of them were placed wrong, and I wanted to just walk through this. Article one, you know, so there are, there are four bills prior to the year. Forty-two hundred dollars to, to our, to our town accountant contract that does our town accounting. Seventy-eight sixty-two to unemployment for Maya. Hundred-and-thirty-three fifty-seven for quest diagnosis for employee physical. Five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thirty-six for Horizon Fund. It's a really not subject to discussion, those aren't bills prior to the year, it's fairly passed by my intention.
The only question I have is how, it's our accountant, I think they go, and that's he's employed by the town. We should have an answer to that question, so.
Well, the, the discussion was that, I spoke to him. Well, the short answer is, I don't know, obviously, he billed it and he paid by the end of the.
Yeah, I don't know if he submitted or didn't submit it, or, maybe he didn't, he's an accountant too, so I could see something fluorescent. Yeah.
Yeah.
We should be prepared against.
Sure. And the short answer was, at this point, you know, I, I don't know. All, all I will say is that, that back in the spring, there was a discussion, we needed to renew the contract.
Yeah.
And it was a discussion, we're going out to bid, and with the turmoil, turmoil, we thought it would be a better idea if we didn't have that. That further turn, so.
We, relatively speaking, this is not a, not a big number for anyone to build this.
No, not at all. So, stabilization, you know, that, that is, that's pretty standard. Capital expenditure account. You know, we don't have, we don't, I don't, I don't know what the balance is capex, but again, that's something we do every when, in the fall, when we have to certify free cash, right? And then, you know, O P A, other post-employment benefits. Are based on, again, out of free cash, all those numbers are fluxed by that, we put aside. Then come again, if a robot, your, like, what our recommendation. Article five, this is, this is something that Jody explained, I think she may have explained to us, and we wanted to. This is the new, new law.
And, and this is actually a typo, she proved in the evidence.
Yeah, that's true.
Do we need, we need that, can we make that type of correction? We could still.
Of course you can, of course you can, but the whole, the whole, this is acting to get us in line with something that I had been complaining about for years. Is that, it really, it always was problematic, that the finance committee was seemingly having to have a meeting before the meeting to vote on recommendations on whether, whether the town should or shouldn't vote on ours. So the idea was to have everything in place, the first step, is to have this in place soon enough, so that we could actually put out a document to the townspeople before the meeting with the actual numbers on it, right?
Yep.
So. We deserve, and I don't think a typo was an issue, one, we deal with it in the time we have, before it gets set up, two. Article six talked about mobile speed limit signs. Again, that number, that number is eighty-two hundred dollars. So, we talked about the article seven, dump truck. Now, I think we brought the subject up before, you know, we have, we have ARPA funds. And rather than taking money out of stabilization or some kind of debt exclusion or spending money on else. Just like we did with, with the pumper for the fire truck, I think we probably should consider, rather than taking money from this source, using some of those ARPA funds to buy this truck, because I don't think it is, certainly is one of the most, if not the most pressing matter for the winter, because right now, we have a, we have a sander truck, sander needs a new clutch and has passed its useful life. Talked to John Dunleavy again today, I don't know if John, John's on here now. John, you, can you put your hand up if you're, if you're listening and want to chime in? Here we go. Want to turn the camera on, or just your microphone, you're muted right now.
How's it going?
Here we, so did you hear back, John and I talked today about potential options of, of getting a truck sooner than later if the funding was available? What, what's your update for us?
I, as of three-thirty, when I left this afternoon, I hadn't heard anything back, other than they were waiting on, they're waiting on information to come back to them to give me a price.
Okay, so why don't you just run through everybody what we talked about, based on, you know, building a truck and the availability of that and the time versus buying what may be available, and then, you know, adding the sander and other equipment to it.
So, building and specing out a truck, right now, we're looking at eighteen to twenty-four months before we would actually have that truck delivered to us. And talking with Mike, he had mentioned something about maybe being able to use ARPA funds if there was something on the ground right now. So I spent yesterday and today looking and was able to come up with two different options for an F-six-hundred dump truck, it's just a cabin chassis, that there, they are on the ground right now. The issue would be that once we purchase that cabin chassis, we have to send it to J.C. Madigan to get outfitted with sander, plow, lights, the paint job. So we would be looking at, best case, probably January before we saw that truck, worst case, February, March. But it's still better than eighteen to twenty-four months.
And what did you say that the estimated cost is to do it?
So, I haven't been able to get a cost on the truck, other than what I saw online. Typically, when a municipality purchases a truck, it's a different price than, say, John Smith walking off the street. Right now, that's the only price I have, is what was listed online. To outfit the truck at J.C. Madigan, we're probably looking at seventy, I'd say between seventy and eighty thousand. And the truck itself is listed online at seventy-two, but again, I'm pretty sure that price will be lower. So we potentially could get a truck for cheaper than what we were going to build one at.
So right now, Article wants to appropriate up to two-hundred thousand dollars for purchase of a truck. You're saying it could be fifty thousand less than that?
It could be, it could be substantial, so that article is if we continue to build the truck, instead of going this F-six-hundred option. And it's tough to say right now, because we're going to be purchasing a 2025 model. And everything I'm hearing is that you should figure on at least ten percent of an increase from this year's prices to next year's. So I put that high on the, the special town meeting warrant, so that we would be covered, because I don't know if J.C. Madigan, again, is gonna, their prices will go up as well. So we very well could come in much lower than that two-hundred, but I just put some cushion in there, in case if that's the route we decide to go.
The other, the other question would be, you know, we have a list here as a purchase, but typically, we target our purchase or lease over a number of years. So we could probably want to change that language, and you should find out what the, what the lease-to-home payment would be. Okay?
Yeah, once I, once I get the price, well, it depends, and once I know the price, I can reach out to the leasing company that we use right now to find out. But it's, it's tough to really figure out any payments right now until I get a, a price nailed down.
So would the, the verbiage for the article apply to this, the cabin chassis, and then outfitting that, or is that, is that the same? Would the article be updated to include that possibility, because that would not be purchasing a new or.
Well, there's two things. As, we can discuss this, but I would say, the one thing we need to update is to, to purchase or lease a new or late model, late model dump truck for the, or, or.
Well, I'm wondering that the other option that John was mentioning about, you know, this, the cabin chassis that would be outfitted, like, I'm just wondering, you'd like, would that be related to the same article?
Yes, we would, no, because we're still, we're still buying.
Right, but I guess the verbiage, so that would not be like a late, a new or late model used, I don't know, would it be?
Yeah, new or late model used.
So I mean, I'm wondering about like including the outfitting as well, because that is a separate, I don't know.
Also, we could, we could relay it up to town council, you could.
Okay, yeah.
And it could also, it could also be done in the motion.
Well, that's, that's exactly the point, at this, we, we could do, do it in, in the motion, whatever gets voted on, so this is a. And, and again, I would argue, even the way it's written here, we are talking about buying a new or late model used dump truck. And when we talk about a dump truck, you know, it's a highway truck.
Right.
So can we confirm our funds can be applied to?
Yes, just like what I was, what I was told was, if we verified it for the, for the fire department truck?
Yeah.
You know, the highway department, it's, it's the same, same scenario.
I mean, there's questions, people are saying you can't use it for road work, or maybe the online reading about it, and I said it's a preference to both roads. You know, road repair, or road, you know, so I, I thought a truck would be fun, but I'm kind of curious of whether.
Yes, I, I wouldn't. I would, I would tend to agree with you with what I'm reading, then. And we do have a, it was a, it was a seminar on, apparently it's been reported, so if we, you can always go back and watch it.
I tried, they wouldn't let you register.
Wouldn't let you register?
Well, they sent that reminder email after the deadline, so when I went to register, and then I sent an email, like, oh, it's too late, just send me.
I think it's posted in the, what, recording webinar section, that, basically, but my interpretation was that it would be liberal.
Would be what?
Liberal, with it.
Yes.
That was sort of the intention when Congress changed its appropriation.
So in this case, and to finish answering the question you had for me earlier today, John. If we were to decide to purchase it using ARPA funds, we would just pass over this article, because it's going to have to wait a term. We can just, we can just do it here, rather than, you know, as the board, we have, that might, in other words, that money is already in place for this board to decide to do.
And if, if it were with Article seven, where would the funds, assuming, I mean, if we went to Article seven, those would be coming out of.
Well, we're not, you see where it says raise and appropriate?
Right.
Right, so it's raise and, or it should be raise and appropriate, where, or transfer. Basically, we would have to figure out where the money was coming from, within, within available funds.
Right.
Some, most likely, except when this is not just a statement.
That would, unless there's some other, unless free cash comes in, you know, right? Yeah, which.
Is that what, what it's saying?
I always hope I got that.
Cash is supposed to be higher, you should.
And if we, and if it did, and actually, if you remember, we did take money out of stabilization at the annual town, the Bay Harbor. So I would be more inclined to put the money back, where we took out of stabilization, because we were below target.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's another reason why.
That target is just a floor, ceiling.
Yeah, exactly, that is correct. Alright, so, so again, Article eight is, um, this is for the fleet management software, so it would be nineteen thousand the first year, and eleven thousand each year after that. John, I guess the question I have is, when it says here nineteen thousand upfront and eleven thousand annually, does that mean we would need thirty thousand the first year for a total of thirty, this, or just?
There would be a total of nineteen thousand for the first year, and then annually after that would be the eleven, and that's for the work order system, the quick asset system, which is the guys in the field, and then the fleet management system.
So the article would be nineteen thousand dollars for the initial purchase, it's eleven thousand.
I think that's professional services to help us put it together as well, so, what that first year costs will hire to have that.
Yeah, so that first year cost is, it includes the training that they will come out and do with the employees, the setup, that is inputting all of our vehicles and equipment into the fleet management system, that's all included in that upfront cost, and then it's just the yearly training is for the use of the software, and I believe there is some, some sort of assistance if needed, that's incorporated into that yearly cost if we're having issues.
Question here, Mike, are we willing to support both in support of these individual articles, or by approving these as it seems? And I said, I guess this particular article, number, number ten, really, but this one, I looked at this, I said, I'm thinking about this at the last meeting. I want to put something like this up to the annual, not because it's not something you need, or something with the overall reorganization, non-reorganization of the town, I would probably want to have that position filled. But the superintendent position, E and T A position, in place to make some sorts of changes, because I just think these are, that, that's combination, like, it's how the operations come on, in terms of operation, probably this past. That's good, I'll do. And it's not, I mean, I think we're going to do it, I just think that, not sure why I'm running it.
Well, I think, I think the reason being is that, if we don't, if we don't appropriate the money now, then we won't have the money until the, until sometime in July.
Well, if we appropriate in May, have it.
Probably for the, for the budget for the, unless you want to appropriate immediately, what we do in May is for July one. So the idea of putting it on there now.
No, 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 you can, you can put money in May for the.
Yeah, sure we can.
But the budget, but your point, the new budgets for July, you could still take money out of free cash, considering in May.
Yeah, but my, my thought is that there's no harm in having on the warrant in appropriating it now. It doesn't mean we have the purchase software, we can, we can just defer the, the spending of the money until we actually put something in place.
So, okay, that's, but back to the question, are we approving, so one of the things, that's one of my things from first going on. We used to approve warrants with the board, and it worked, we asked for any next to the votes, and whether or not we supported the article, like, full, you know, we never brought it to say, yes, fully on land, it's unanimous, real, tell you something, that, so I don't know, me as a board, I mean, vote on these, you don't need to, that's just me. Or work by approving the warrant, be supporting.
Those days. Well, my, my, my personal understanding, since I've been on the board, is that, since we just, except for citizen petitions, we're deciding, we decided to put this on, on the warrant.
I think you would, someone would need to propose a motion to not have it on.
No, 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 we can, what we're doing right now is we're discussing, we're discussing this warrant, so we would, yeah, you know, and we can either vote on individual articles, or we can just vote as a, as a board to approve the articles the way they are. And certainly, I think, I think one big difference with this money now compared to before, is if we appropriated money before specifically for the highway department. The highway survey was like an official, so once we appropriated the money, then that, that official could spend that money. But that's not the, we're at, just because we've appropriated, it can, we can have it subject to, to our approval, so just because, just because we've appropriated, doesn't mean.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I can think of something, I want to do, but I just want to make, it's sort of what we're looking at for town operations right now. A lot of moving parts, and I do think the T A, superintendent, all these people are going to be accountable, responsible for this decision we made now. Sort of be in place where we have a force, if we bring somebody in, like, T A's had a different software in mind, this is awesome, you've never heard of it? Now maybe some of it we won't hear, or we pull the trigger.
And I don't disagree, my only reason for wanting to keep it on there is, you know, clearly.
I'm okay with appropriating it.
Yeah.
Without, like, pulling the trigger on purchasing, maybe everyone can slow that roll a little bit, so.
So we're going to, something we can discuss. But I think at this point, it's, the matter at this moment, is that we need to, if we don't appropriate the money, then we don't have an option for that, right now. And I think the Collins Center recommendation, this recommending something like this was what, is what they recommend. But you're right, as far as which software would you use, I know John did some diligence, and this can't be highly recommended, but you're right, maybe somebody definitely hired a town administrator, somebody may have something where it has a module in it that'll do this fleet.
We're talking broader application, speed, price, we actually used the larger just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hesitant to hold all decisions, so we have all this on board, so.
Yes.
Want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But I hear what you're saying, that makes sense.
So, right, unless anybody has an objection, we're going to leave Article eight in place the way that it is, right? Article nine is this key FOB system, I don't know, it says estimate for Dan Byer, I'd like to see a quote. So that this number is accurate, but I think in, in, in theory, spending money for FOB system for town hall would be great. Right?
So needed, yes.
And for, for safety reasons, too.
Safety and accountability, yeah, that's a main reason, can't audit access.
Right. Article ten, I'm not sure that, that we need to have an article on the warrant to, to create this position in the warrant. I think that this is a decision that the board would.
I guess, yeah, it's talking about funds, but.
It's had to do with two, two increases.
Is that the thought, though, is that why they put it on the warrant, because the thought was we need to appropriate money?
Thirty-nine thousand, ninety-five thousand, which was less than the share, so.
I love this. Right. So if they're in our positions, or in the position.
There would be a pool of draw from.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it would need to wait until May to have.
Yeah, and again, we can, again, unless people really are against it, or against having it, we can always pass it.
I'd be against having it, once we get past it, I still think, I thought we, I was surprised to see it, I thought we said the last time that we wouldn't move on that, but we couldn't, even I said we'd move on the software, that was.
Yep.
And we, well, it's, it's in the budget to have somebody in the, it's not called superintendent of public works at this time, but it's in the budget for the highway surveyor.
And we have, we have money in the budget to have a highway survey.
Right.
So we don't need to, we don't need to appropriate additional funds.
This is only if a, an additional position is created.
Like I said, to read, to, 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 you know, the town already voted to make the highway surveyor appointed, instead of like. So we certainly could afford that. And then if we had another position, I would, I wouldn't want to put that, I wouldn't want to do anything different as far as hiring somebody else until we get the town administrator in place, anyways.
Right.
And based on the current timeframe, we can just do this at the, at the May meeting. So do you want to just, just remove number eleven?
I'd like to remove it, just to not start anything.
I'm sorry.
And I think the other thing, like, we tried to mention, like, the parks piece that might require a lot of bargaining, things like that.
Well, all of it, no, I think, we would, I mean, actually, while we're talking about it, I think you may remember, we talked about, one of the things that that Dan Byer had spoken about with the water department, was to take some things in-house, because they have the center price fund, and use it. And, you know, he had actually, they have the equipment, and he actually wanted to be the one to drain the fire engines. And I talked to labor council about it, and the suggestion, the direction I was given is that we should talk to to their union council, because I don't want it to, it could be considered this direct deal, one direct to. So I had asked Dan to reach out to his units, to his union, the labor council, to do this, just while we're discussing.
Sounds like we would like to consider all of that. We also want to get some clarity in terms of department name.
Yes.
And his staff report until it's a department name, it's actually an issue.
So, so the point is, at this point, we would just, we would remove number ten.
Too many moving parts.
So everybody probably agree. Just, we just get my sharpie. And while we're, just go back up here, it's.
And this has the new language from.
Prude.
Land use, I'm here.
It doesn't mention the location.
My channel plan. Yeah, we can.
There was a discussion at the land use committee meeting last night about some questions of whether, like, Inman Hill is the right place for this, and so well, I think it was more, I guess there were concerns that it would interfere with hunting on that property, because it would be potentially interfering.
There's a lot of hunting.
There is, so, so.
They're all the time.
The, the land use committee member who advocates for the hunters, also advocating for, considering other town properties for this, and so yeah, so Ellen Agro, who's, has been like, doing the research on this, so she agreed. yeah, so Ellen Agro, who's, has been, like, doing the research on this, so she agreed that it would be worthwhile to explore the other properties.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see this happen, so.
Yeah.
I've never played this.
I haven't either. I would just, like, this is, this, sorry, article eleven is compatible with some of the master plan goals about, like, recreation, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, there might be, there might be some space, even on the paddock property.
Good point, well, actually, not with the conservation restriction, because it's not considered passive recreation, so it needs to be on a property that does not have any, that kind of conservation restriction.
So, maybe, so the other place might be the trash property.
Possibly, possibly.
Across from, across from the school.
And I think there was some question about whether town forest could be eligible, but there are state laws that, and, that, that need to be investigated. It may, may or may not be possible to have that on the town, town forest.
So, right now, the language is just town on land?
Yes.
Are we confident that there is a partial concern? Lines somewhere? Is there somewhere in the inventory?
I, I think so, that was, that was my impression, so.
Also medic, like, trust the U.A.
So, that, that was going to be another, right, another question, you know, checking, checking with them if they have restrictions that would allow for this.
There's a, it's interesting, there is, there's another piece of town on land. If, if you, if you go to the, the intersection of Providence Street and Cemetery Street, see, there's actually, Cemetery Street comes down to Providence? There's a dirt road.
Yeah.
Goes, right, there's a, there's a, a small cemetery, Upcoke Cemetery. And that land belongs, was taken by the town years ago, and the conversation at one point, probably twenty years, was to turn that, turn that small cemetery into a big cemetery, because we're out of room, that's why, and some people are putting, you know, have bought some lots, you know, one from George Street.
Yeah, I saw something up there a couple of weeks ago.
Well, that big piece, the issue has always been, it was a road that used to go from Bellingham, well, down Thayer Road, up off of Bay Street, where it goes into.
Back with the solar operation in, everything behind.
At the end of.
Soccer place.
Not, not there, Thayer Road, which is the other side towards Bellingham, if you go across Bellingham Street and up the hill, Thayer Road is.
Right, there's that little development.
Yes, there was a, there was a throughway that went across, goes across somebody's property, over a river, and then it comes out onto the end. But coming from this side, coming from the Cemetery Street, Providence Road side, the land is owned by Barney and Caden, it's the two landowners. And, you know, there's a gate across it, because Barney started to gate it because of his insurance, and he's gone now, but when I talked to him about this, years and years ago, he gated it because he considered it abandoned, but the argument is, can it really ever be abandoned? And there's a potential, the point is, that land is a beautiful, flat area, that could, that possibly could be another.
So, I mean, although apparently hills and trees are desirable for this type of, like, apparently the course is more interesting, the more natural features are present. I, I mean, I've never even seen it, other than, you know, looking at it, I've got online, I'm like, what is this?
I'll make one in my backyard.
Well, that's, that's not town on land, so that would be, that would.
Right.
Well, I mean, you could, this is a longer term thing.
Right.
To your point, appropriate the money, stop looking, evaluating, change.
Right, right.
Yeah, the thing about, the thing about a conservation restriction, like on, on Bannister's land, I, I know from past experience with the Boy Scouts, there's a huge tract of land in Framingham suburb, most of them.
I've been there a few times.
Yeah, I've been there a few times, too. And that area was, you know, basically, the, the towns of Framingham, Sudbury purchased a conservation restriction. But what that did was, it opened it up to the public, so although we still have the right to close from time to time for me, or have, have our own events on there, we can't close it to the public, until they have, always have access. So, the same thing with the disc golf course, if we wanted to do that, I think that would be, I think that would be an acceptable use. Especially where, right now, I think part of that, part of that tract of land, I think they were against having hunting on it.
Yes.
We, so I was thinking about, we could see, see a similar discussion on.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And more we kind of be confines of where different things can occur in town, and. Where, I, I agree, it's like, you can disc golf somewhere where there's a lot of hunting, one, it's not safe for golf. Disc golfers, but it's also been all the wildlife's been off.
All right, so the point is, we're all in agreement, eleven, which is twenty four nine fifty, we just won't just say town on land, especially higher location. Twelve is two hundred and twenty five thousand to, to buy a conservation restriction on the, on the Bannister's property up on North Avenue. Did anyone want to just enlighten us about the discussion on that property? Did, did the board, so the, so the land use committee did vote?
Yeah, the land use committee has supported that.
CTC is going to vote on that. And discussion, but no decisions.
So, just so we're clear, we're gonna, we're gonna do this warrant, article eleven would now become article ten. Well, eleven, and then article twelve would be to accept on street. Assuming we have all, everything we need.
Seems like it.
So, as we just, as we just ran and went through, and I didn't look here, I guess I'd be looking for motion to approve ESTM warrant eleven six twenty three pending approval by town house.
As chairman of rolling.
Well, as, as the board.
So.
All right, one of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so. All right, let's, um, let's talk about goals and objectives, and then we talk about adopting a matrix of goals, but I know it's less than out there, but just, I can just write a few things on. I, I see that there are three, there are three items, really, or three things that we need to focus on. One of them is the DLS study. The second one was the Collins. Study on highway. Then, third thing is the master. We all agree that those are the three documents that we're, we're pulling information from, right?
Yes.
And, and this is just my, my experience, just going back to the DLS study, to me, the number one thing that, that we never did was to have some financial policies and procedures, and just to give you a little bit of history, when I was the chair of the FinCon, treasurer collector at the time, came to me and explained that, you know, we had never actually voted any policies and procedures in place as a board, the town had never put them in place, so. And I went to the town administrator at the time, town administrator said that the select board, or the board of, or the board of selectmen at the time, weren't ready to vote on policies and procedures, or, and, to, to, to draw it out a little bit further, actually, Eric Kirshoff, our, the contract designer accounting, provided us with boilerplate policies and procedures, and, fast forward to the DLS study, before the DLS study, before they started to do that review, I had a conversation with the town administrator, and she told me that she wanted to put them in place, and I said, well, at this point, I don't want to vote on anything until they do their review. And then she had it posted anyways, but I just want to make it clear that we don't have, we, we as a board have never accepted any policies and procedures, although the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has laws that we have to follow, we have never, as a board, voted any specific policies and procedures, so to me, first thing we should do is, we should vote to put some policies, policies and procedures in place.
Question somewhat related, so when, when is Jody going to present? So, she was going to present a bit about the DLS study recommendations, and is that still coming up?
Well, we didn't, originally, I thought it was going to happen in September, then she asked to do it essentially next week, which was the second meeting in October, was when she was going to be ready to do it.
Okay.
So, we have not had that presentation yet.
Right.
But I think that obviously we should, unless you have specifics, I know maybe you have it on the board of some things. And again, I, I think all, you know, all three of these, the other, the other issue about all of this is, before we start putting things in place, like actually creating a department of public works and deciding, well, to me, it's functionality first. You know, to me, I think we should look at what, exactly how we want to change, if we want to change the way that the town functions, the way these, the way these, these boards interact, and who has responsibility for money.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree that, in general, we're agreeing, like, on policies and procedures compared to most other towns, like, you know, their shared ones. We also have, on a similar note, we also have a select board of policies and procedures, so.
Yes, there is, there, there is a, a draft that was done, actually, it was before you were running last time, it was actually, it was, there was a member of the board named Sharon Cutter, who actually, I think she was the chair when, when it was put together, and I do have that document. Actually, uh.
Stone tablet.
Very funny.
Maybe throw a little stuff a little bit, I mean, saying, you know, town, just policy and procedure seems to be objective, it seems to be, I suppose.
Yes.
Financial, I'm not even sure what the select board policy and procedure.
I mean, it says procurement under category, so.
Yeah, but, but I think it's, it's, there are select board, there are financial policies, a select board should.
It could just be a policy about what you were talking about earlier, right? You could just have a policy for when we approve the warrant, and how we approve it.
Yeah, my point is, what, if you decide to do it, we need to term what right now, which means. I was actually saying, okay, I, I'm good with, like, the category, by, by this fiscal year, implementing, you know, establishing policies and procedures for financial practices, select board practices, maybe that, that for now, because it was in two areas, we sort of have purpose, you know what I mean?
I'd like it just, yeah, to have a tad more granularity.
So, if we can put, I guess what I'm trying to do here is to get something that's immediate right now, and I just think this is, this is something meaningful that we should have in place. This financial, financial policies and procedures.
Because there, there is a draft document of this.
Because it's, because it's urgent, I mean, I'll give it.
Right, but I mean, it's urgent, but also potentially fast.
Slow handy.
So, right.
Because a number of people say that, too, saying, there's one thing you're going to do. I'm, I'm good with that, you know, if you want to put it out there, I mean, if we had a objective or goal in this fiscal year, you want to put it like that, we can blow it out to be more, try to clarity around what the purpose are, say, this discussion right now, I'm good with that.
But I will give you, I will give you an example of that, at one point, the assistant treasurer collector had mentioned to me that there were town employees that were putting in certain expenses for reimbursement in relation to travel and other things, and, and his question was, he asked me if I knew what exactly was acceptable, what wasn't, and I asked, well, what, what, what do the policies and procedures say? He said, well, right now.
All right, so, so you're talking about something as, if I would have considered as minor as an expense reimbursement policy, we don't have those, so yes. I'm, I'm right up there with a hundred percent, number one.
So, that's, which, which is my point.
Yes.
It's always nice to give a, to give a, you know, an anecdote.
Yeah, the problem makes more sense.
Right, so, you know, we, we need to give people guidance, you know.
For media, so establishing capital plan.
Yes, excited, yeah. Well, because it, it feels like out there are a lot of dependencies on that, a lot of projects.
Even multi-year budgets, because there's a lot of stuff that's, whether it's highway, master plan, or some DLS study, we don't have a firm grasp of the financial picture is now and then three years out.
I'd like to just avoid whatever caused us to not do this in the past, because it seems to have been brought up a lot, and talked about a lot.
You mean with the capital planning committee, yeah, what, right, like.
Like, why aren't we able to actually execute on that?
I think it's just, just.
Just because we.
This is, now having a capital planning committee, that requires resources, and these are two separate things, we can develop a capital plan, understand our capital planning needs, without a committee, and the committee is a secondary following, and getting the understanding of the capital needs right now.
Well, the, the problem with, the problem with having a capital plan committee is, when they say, okay, what's the plan?
Where do we start?
Right.
Well, that's why you're right, we need to do the plan first.
And I think there's enough people that express interest, and the FinCon's one of them, right, they actually threw that out there, saying they need to be, and I might suggest it might, that make a subcommittee, not full FinCon.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, and I signed up to be interfacing with that, we, we got to stand with the schools and make sure that towns' needs are prioritized against the. We don't have a plan, we can't, you know.
Right, there's no standing when you're arguing against more or less money, if we don't know what we're spending it on, yeah.
Is there anything else that comes to mind to me, because I, what, what I wanted to do was go through the recommendations on a financial plan, to just, to see if there's anything else in here, listed here, would you agree that these two were meaningful?
Yeah, those are high in my mind, but one thing I would say, if you look at that spreadsheet, there's also a core thing, what I call core, I just went through it, it's a core versus strategic, which is more, we don't need to create goals around it, you just might need to say, you know, like, the, the department head team meetings that gave it start, that's actually a recommendation, check, so there are things we don't need necessarily own, focus on, maybe get the power going, but we should just make sure that somebody does, some things like, or review these things, right? Then there's like day-to-day things, and it's somebody's job to do these things, they just need to make sure, so.
Is that what you mean by core is the day-to-day?
Yeah, well, that's, but, continue department head meetings, right, you started that.
I think you should say establish and continue, that would take credit for that first goal being achieved, it's good start.
So, I'm going to put it.
So, you're trying to prove, or I stopped?
Yeah.
We're, we're in the second.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, come on.
That's true, I mean, it is good that we, you know, I've done that before, like, maybe to do this, but like, put a thing on.
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
You got it, like.
That's the thing I heard from employees.
Now, there's one on here that says codify town administrator role, and I, I'm going to put that on here, because what we're doing right now.
Right, this is, this is relevant to our search list coming up, and we're going to have the, I think, off the profile, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Be helpful, then, that's.
Right, and, and actually, I, I should just bring you up to speed that I had, I received a, an email last week, a gentleman that interviewed all of us, that they are putting, they're putting together, he was sending something to the illustrator, just actually, you know, starting to recruit people, and he was asking for photographs of the town, and you're all kind of famous, because one of. And you're all kind of famous, because one of the pictures that the town, that the police department had provided me is a picture of the drone from the water of all of us at the, at the cardboard boat race.
Boat, it's not even like.
And I'm pretty tired of Brendan Salzeller.
Well, no, no, it's not, actually, we're, we're in the crowd, it's not actually where our boat, you're not, you're not.
You can actually see the boat.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the background, but, but there's some great, and actually, I just, I want to put a shout out um, to the, to the police chief and, and the police department. Because, you know, I asked them, do you have any pictures? And within a couple of hours, he had what I thought was very, some fantastic pictures that really um, put the town in a great light, captures great pictures of this whole campus, um, of the cardboard boat race from the water, everybody's there. And then, um, another one of everybody, um, from above, um, at the memorial day parade in the center. Uh, which I thought just, it actually really, he really, really captured the, uh, I think the character and the tone of the town.
That's awesome. Community, history.
And then, and the other thing, and again, this is anecdotal too, but the other morning, I was putting my trash out and, uh, and the, the police department had actually, um, pulled somebody over on, in front of my house. And I just, I smiled because I thought about, you know, when I used to do that. And this, this, uh, female officer walked up to the vehicle and just said, good morning. And it was just, um, it was pleasantly surprising. Not, not that I've ever seen any, any men in police officers being professional, but it was very professional, very positive, very, uh, it was great. And I told the chief that, that, um, you know, definitely, it, it just had a great tone.
But anyways, I might nicely codify one, can you just make a note to write that, that's to me like a multi-year thing. So we're going to add the foundation of the job description.
And the Collins job.
It's going to cod, you know, codifying by law.
Yeah, I know, but we'll have a foundation.
Right, so it's just, just to, so that's not something to complete this fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I, I think, so maybe instead of codifying about, when you say define?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and the job description leads into the bylaw. Yeah, and I'm, I'm not even, I'm not even okay with the, you know, one A versus one B, because I don't think going to ultimately the idea of making that the bylaw codifying it drives stability, which, you know, this name is pushing.
Yeah.
All right, I'm also taking notes on, on this, right?
Yeah, great, yeah, great. I just, what I was going to do is, is take this, because these have, you know, stickers on the back.
Yeah.
I was actually going to bring it and put it into, into the town administrator's office. Because I figured it would be a good.
Could be a good start for the murder board, I want it to do. One of these days, I'm going to do a murder board.
All right. Well, I've seen those, the magnetic ones you can actually throw.
Okay, well, because I, you know, they're really good for dependencies, so like, you know.
Yeah.
Remote string to attach.
But, so, so again, so financial policies and procedures, if, if a capital plan sets priorities, um, you know, establish and then continue department head meetings, and then define the town administrator role, job description. Now, give me some others that, well, the bylaw, or the bylaw, or the community. That ties back to a number of other things coming up, Mr. Fink, so to. All right, so let's just, I just want to read through these. So town administrator formalized role responsibility detailed, hiring and removal process, so it's a bunch of process, contract negotiations, procurement, but I think all of those are enclosed in these, in these, um, in these three things here. Because policies and procedures and capital plan, if you want to come up with another bullet point here on, on the town administrator role, I think this is enough for the, for the short term. You'll ask me, will we, well, what I'm trying to do is, my, what I'm trying to do is, is give some action items, of things to work on, that, that, that most, that most of me, and I'm looking at the recommendations, because as we talked about, I think, you know, there's some, you know, immediate logging through, to use your term, right? And then there are things that are, for instance, when it talks about detailed hiring and removal process evaluating major performance, that, that maybe is something we could, we could look to the Collins Center to give us some language, because that, that would be something that would be good for somebody, because if we're going to hire somebody, they should know we've already got that in place, and if we don't, then they're going to help us put that together. I mean, in a perfect world, we'd already, but keep in mind, when this was put together, we had a town administrator working. Now, this was kind of interrupted, because now we're going to search for renewal. Without any of that, and, and even, and just to, just to, the, the, um, you know, the, the, the idea was that the town administrator contract had actually had it, that there would be a, a yearly evaluation process. But when I talked to the Collins Center about it, I was told that you can't review somebody if you didn't have goals and objectives.
Right.
The year before, but she did admit to me that, you know, if there were, if there were basic responsibilities that were in that contract from the beginning of the contract, certainly you could be too. Yeah, right. So, the question is, is that another thing that talks about defining town administrator role and job description? We want to put a sub-note in here, um, hiring, hiring and removal process evaluating major performance. Put some, put something in there about that.
Well, so, so you're saying the hiring and removal process is the TA?
Yes, in other words, I, I think, I think it's an immediate thing for us to have some, again, it goes into.
I think that's going to come out of the, um. I agree, so the, we're going to define the job description, we should be able to develop performance management goals based on that job description, so once we have them, we'll set that prior. The hiring and removal process, I would be, that to me is, you know, um, another policy and procedure for the town, right? That's actually a select word policy and procedure, we are the hiring body, right? So if you want to establish a specific policy on hiring and removal of the TA money as a task or an action item, that's okay, right? So select board policy procedures, including, including, uh, update the personnel policy. Because to me, the personnel policy is where that's all contained, right? Yeah, I mean, it's very specific to the TA, or are you saying this hiring and removal goes to every position?
Yeah, well, actually, the, the, the actual policy that was, the, the one that's in place that actually was, I think first written in ninety-nine, it was, was, was supposed to be, there, there was, there was suggestions that were to be voted on about six or seven years ago, which, interestingly enough, the, the, the current HR person has them, but they just never got, they were actually put in place, so they were, they were ready to be voted on when the previous town administrator was hired. But then, once that person was hired, it was never, it was never, it never progressed that way. It's the way, it's what it was total. So that's why I say update the personnel policy. Right, which, if you look at this here, it talks about, um, there's a recommendation to codify personal policy.
So I'm going to take the notes on that.
So, this says select board policies and procedures, update the personnel policy, including performance reviews.
Sure.
So.
And those might be two specific examples, but for P and P as a whole, it's broader than just those two. And that's a living document in some extent, so we may start with a three-page policy procedure that we amend, amend as we go.
Well, I, I think, I think, like I said, I have this document that is great starting point. I'm sure it, surely needs to be updated, but it's a starting point, right?
So, uh, just for reference, I have Formed G U's personnel policy, all separate line orders in this Excel, so it's, it goes along.
Sure. I mean, so I, I'm fine with, with that being the working document, but I'm just, what I'm trying to do is just, you know, right? And, and put it someplace, you know? So we can look at it.
Would you put the, uh, by chief? Would you put the bylaw committee above or below capital plan?
Yeah. But, but, yeah, still, like, get it on, get it on the list to.
Because those are two big.
Right, these are just a bunch of, you know what I mean?
What's that?
This, they're not doing sequence either.
Right.
When you look at this, different bodies are potentially executing parallel, right? So depending on bylaw, many can be formed and start their work at the same time a capital plan is starting to be established. You know what I mean? So I, that's why I wanted to throw it up there, Mike said immediate, like, well, let's form a bylaw committee, look for volunteers, right? Or maybe we just.
Well, like, what I was also thinking would be, would, would those, like, high-level needs of ours be something we could include in the goals for the town administrator to help, you know, manage that? You know, and that could link together all of those pieces, uh, you know, the first year roles and goals, how they can help enable the town to move forward, how that ties into personnel procedure policies. If, if they're, I'm trying to figure out how to accommodate what you were saying before, like waiting so that the person running things would have some say in it, but also give them some guidance before they could work on it, and maybe it's, those are two big committees, if they had a hand in ensuring it went well over the next twelve months and that was a priority for them?
I would agree, I would say, um, like, so, so think about the TA, right? I expect we're going to have our full-time TA, it's now on total. Whatever we do immediately would just be getting traction.
Right.
Yeah, so I think the timing actually works well, based on our, our, yeah, hiring, right? Something, finance, site, policy, procedure, whether it's personnel, financials, I would probably say for the, in the job description role, maintaining and updating.
Modernizing our policy.
Procedures is part of the TA's role. Now, that TA determines that anyone to delegate to, the director of, the finance director on the financial side, yeah, that, that makes sense to me, you know what I mean?
The same thing with like enabling HR on the personnel side.
I think, I think.
Because we're always boiling the ocean if the select board is probably staying.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I am, I'm pretty clearly a delegate. But I do, but I do, apparently, like, like, developing the capital plan, to me, that is a tactical need that we can execute on a project-like basis. The capital planning committee, maybe that's a, that's a follow-on, because that's going to be harder to get people, right? But, again, when you talk about job description, one of the things is to establish continued department head meetings, another one is to maintain personnel. Oh, yeah, right, and, and, and I would say the financial policies, procedures too, you know what I mean? Any, any, well, think about, the TA to me is the, is the, uh, COO of the town operations, right?
Yeah, so you're talking about governance operations, right?
Well, not, not governance. I, I think, I think we have to define the narrative day-to-day.
The operational governance versus.
When I talk about, I, I think it's important when we say personnel policy, we're talking about day-to-day.
Need to figure out whatever the, um, discipline.
Well, what, what's, what's an example of not day-to-day, let's say, when you make that distinction?
Long-term hiring.
Well, things, things like, things like, um, you know, how, how, the, the, the process of getting things on the water. Because there, there are law, there are, you know, um, mass law that defines it, but we can further define it.
Oh, right, right, so would you say the TA is not, um, the keeper of that particular policy you just described, right?
I would, I would say that it's their job to carry it out.
Yep.
But it's not their job to establish it. Okay, it's our job to establish it, but.
So, this is where the board should be setting vision, strategy, policy, the TA is the execution of.
Currentization.
Strategy and policy.
Right.
And the details there on.
Right, means, so, so if, if. And, and just to, just to carry that, continue that thought, um, I, I, I think, you know, there, there's an awful lot of talent in this town. And there's a lot of, and, and I, I think we're probably off on the sense we've been recording and, and broadcasting these meetings, that there are people, because let's face it, for those who weren't initiated, getting involved in town government can be intimidating.
It doesn't.
Yet, why, right? Right?
Yes.
I mean, every person through might have a conversation and recruited, right? They talked about this, right? So to me, part of that is, of this process, is for us to recruit people and get them involved in setting those policies up. But all of this is to put it day-to-day in, in the hands of the, of the town administrator, who's a professional, who knows how to carry it out, and they certainly provide guidance along with town council. But part of that is for us, you know, you'd almost like to say, um, we talk about select board policies and procedures, you know, some of that is even, is even, you know, I would even go as far as to recruit volunteers. And by that, what I mean is, we put policies in place that encourage that. Maybe not, maybe not go out in, but for instance, you know, every year, we reappoint people. You know, I mean, you know, the idea that they're supposed to have ethics training done. You know, that, again, that's a specific, it's not finite, but that is a piece that needs to be in there.
There, there was the policy at heart, I guess the recommendation about how, like, how to fill positions that we wanted to advertise for forty-five days, so like, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, that exists somewhere, but we haven't, like, discussed that document.
I find that whole, yes.
In, in my experience, we, we reinvent the wheel an awful lot of the time, because how do you do this? I mean, ask, does anybody know? That's what, that's what I mean by these select board policies and procedures. And it becomes a matter of, every time I bring it up, we write it down someplace, you have a document, and we still. I, I wish, I wish we hadn't started, I had done that three years ago. You know, when we started talking about this, because then we, we already have the bones of it in place.
Yeah.
You know, that's why I, I want to write this up, although it's very messy, but to put it on the, put it in there, right?
I thought when I joined, there should be a procedural document for how to be a select board.
Yeah, and I was given, and I was, I was given a notebook by the, a notebook that the, that the, um, town clerk gave me, you know.
Yeah, I got a two-hundred-page manual.
Right, but, did you read it?
I got through the first couple.
Yeah, and why, and did you find, and, and why didn't you go first?
Because it's kind of dated.
It's kind of dated.
I don't know, I thought it was, yeah, it was, it was definitely.
Kind of dated, it's dated. They said they're updating it and putting it online this year, and there'll be a new, there'll be an updated, you know, less archaic language. Uh, yeah, a little bit more modern, you know, statements about men and women in there, so, uh, yeah. They said they're gonna, they won't be printing anymore, and then they're gonna do it online, and it's supposed to get released sometime this year.
Yeah, right.
This is then your, this is then your onboard.
Yeah, when it's a seminar, and I'm sure they'll say that again in the January.
Yeah, right.
Or maybe they'll launch it.
Well, by the way, I, I actually sent, uh, I did register for the, for the MMA conference.
So, this is in January, yeah, you mentioned that, I'm like, I gotta look.
I put it on my calendar.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, but, but what you want to do is go online now, register now, and tell them, they will, they will send a bill to the town after it's open. And what you want to do is register and then send that to Laura, so she'll know.
It's January nineteenth and twentieth.
Like Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday night, Saturday night.
Oh. I know I had a conflict this past January, so I don't remember what it was. Maybe this year.
Past June.
Be sure that wasn't.
Yeah.
Sure, it won't be this year.
Definitely won't be this year.
The immediate note thing is reestablish these five-year rule meetings, plan, so we've got this study coming in a couple of weeks. But I think we should probably have a lot of interest in this, make sure.
Yeah, that's something we should do for the public, yeah.
Like five, so you know when everyone's getting touch.
Absolutely, I was just thinking about. Absolutely, I was just thinking about that today.
Well, just, just as a little reminder, uh, the, the State Department Transportation is coming out on Friday at 11 o'clock.
Yep.
Until day, I was, okay, and I'll be there.
I can't.
Yeah. As long as we've got some representation. I mean, Washington Street, basically Joyce Kilnworth's driveway, which is parked, it's like Washington Street. And we can park in the driveway around Washington Street, right?
Yeah, I didn't know how to move it though.
Well.
Well, friends who are coming, then I, we'll all stay back, cause then it's a quorum.
It doesn't matter, we're not going to deliberate. You can all, you can all.
We'll all scowl together.
Yeah, that's right.
That five year plan though, I do think that's another area, I think we should think about ARPO funds to try to get a kickstart in that. Once we see the study and figure out if that's a way to balance maintenance and then total reconstruction, you know.
Yeah, how do we do that alongside the highway?
Well, we would do that with. So what? What's the date of the last row study?
It's like 2015 to 2017.
Yeah. But I think, um, I think a draft came in and John Dunn, John wants to speak to it, you know? You get him some feedback and expect something. But that's where I look at ARPO or stabilization, I guess it's project based work, it's, it's.
Something about roads though that, that.
I, I was looking at ARPO, it said, it, it, it references road, it's, you know, the elites, it's very ambiguous. I need somebody to say, can I or can't I? And basically Jason said, I can, he said, be liberal with your interpretations.
Well, I mean, so.
My ear told me that, so I just repeated it.
But I think it's different than actually what it said.
Yeah, but I mean, I was, I would be, I would be even for taking some stabilization just to get it and start, you know, like, for us playing catch up, you know that.
Yeah.
Right, definitely, people do care about the roads, like.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's an immediate.
Right, well, and it's just, it's a safety issue also, it's like, I know Menkill Road is so much better now, right? What about like all the gaps that were like on the side of the road, I think people getting those.
Oh, yeah.
Hot holes.
They all used to be on Main Street until they redid that road.
Yeah.
And then they started leaving Menkill Road.
You guys should go to Inman where there's almost everything.
Correct.
Pretty bad.
Um, all right. Amy had a multi-year forecast, budget forecast to this. And I just think there's like, I think the capital plan, when I look at that, I just think a lot of these things is really one goal around. Yeah, it's a lot of these rolled together, you know, like they're all under. And we've got like, you know, Jody obviously can't do it all, but we have a finance department that could be under, which you need to provide resources to help that department.
Finance committee, I think, expressed an interest in getting involved, like huge advisory.
Yeah, well, one of the, well, one of the other things, the recommendation we talked about was, you know, our, what I've always sensed was somewhat problematic. Is that the select board chooses the finance, and then, you know, the select board sets the budget, the finance committee. You know, the idea is they make a recommendation to the townspeople on the budget. Like what, what I was told was a lot of communities, it's actually, um, moderator, some, some places actually have elections for finance committee. Some have, the moderator actually chooses the finance committee, so that they're not chosen by the select board. Or there's, or there's a mix.
Yeah.
Or there's a mix.
It's, it's in the bylaws, right? Current bylaws, but I guess that could be a consideration if we have a bylaw review committee.
Right.
Is, um.
Yeah, right.
Consider whether we want to like restructure any of the.
Also, we have a lot of.
So do we want to, so, I don't think we, we didn't put that on.
No, I think.
Do you want to make that as an immediate, a bylaw review committee?
Yeah, I think, I think it's just like a need to look at these as a way that, that's foundational, right?
I, I, well, it affects a lot of different points across, you know, multiple areas and also, yeah, the, right.
If you're gonna do anything and you start it now.
Study, I think, I don't know, remember we got that.
CMR, well, CMR PC is, that's for zoning, but those are zoning bylaws.
Right, so like.
So that's one half of the, that's one half of it.
Pulled it into that process, but right, the, the other bylaws.
So for this, we have, so we have, in here, we have. CMR PC.
Yeah, so I have.
Rezoning.
It's on the books. It's on the books.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically the bylaw review committee, we've actually got CMR PC that's going to review those zoning bylaws.
And maybe we can, one of this board to define what that, what our expectations with the objective of that committee is, what sets and guidelines for them to be able to execute. Cause when you just get a bunch of people volunteering, all of a sudden they're trying to figure out, what is our challenge? What are we, we need to be very clear.
Right.
Yes, there are people who would like to be on that committee, have ideas.
So, so by law review committee with the select board to define expectations.
And again, just with something like this, that is so foundational, because that's going to be the movement.
Yes.
We gotta really want, you know, before we run here.
Do you have that procedures in place for how things get out of that committee and back to select board?
I think we can do it, I think we can, that committee does.
I think that's what I'm saying.
So, so we start by defining expectations. And we define those expectations both with this committee's, that we're on, which actually, if you look back up here, that comes back up, it's like what policies.
Which is what I mean, vert, vertigo, you gotta have those, you know?
Yeah.
Strings connecting them.
Right.
They have top word.
But this, but this is so much better.
So like, can I ask quite a question? Something Mike, you just said, you know, the select, we need to find expectations. We need to be a volunteer among the select board to ask the draft of those expectations, but easily bring it back to the board view, that would be our start.
Which expectation?
How about, how about by law review committee, I'm just saying, by law review committee, I'm saying, you know what? Somebody take a run at what that, what we think makes sense that committee to do, and then they bring it to a select board meeting and all look at.
Completely agree, it's, it's easier to add on.
Yeah, okay. Well, I wonder about like scheduling like a month, like a target month to discuss some of these issues.
How about, how about if we just put, one of the immediate things for us, we find that, and let's review the existing draft of the select board policies and procedures.
And review and discuss it and.
Yeah.
That's fine. But like that by law review committee, we need to define expectations.
Everybody gets that in time.
Formed, we need to have expectations. Uh, so I just think when I'm looking at like, there's things here where maybe individually or two of us need to say, let's say we run it back, so bring it back to the full committee. Cause the next thing to talk about it.
Right, right, it's, it, right, it's, it is so useful to have like a working document like we've had, right? Like we start with the same set of things.
So, I'm gonna show you something real quick.
Is that what you're gonna show us?
No. No, sorry.
It's recorded now, so.
So I already started, uh, geez, no, I sort of already started putting together like a skeleton of some of these things. And this is just, you know, a document format, but this is something that needs to be, basically, all right, policies, police history, you know? Uh, border relationship, orientation, code of conduct, communications, things like that. So it's just a skeleton for us to fill in. I was going to start filling the name. But this draft already.
Right, so like Mike, you said you have a draft.
I do.
Years ago.
I do, yeah, so we get it someplace.
Is it, is it on paper? That many years ago is probably like.
Yes, it is something that, I, I don't know if it was, if it's been scanned or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or something.
Although I will tell you, I will tell you that when I first became a cop, right, um, all the driver's licenses, um, of everybody in the state was on a micro feature.
Like a little.
We had a machine.
Thing.
Well, you, well, you put it in the machine and then you looked in the.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I've gone to the library.
Because we did not have, we did not have a, you know, the connection to the, you know, because lead smaller post needs to process this. Which is what everybody likes to get information on, we didn't have, because, because our station was made 24 hours a day, we didn't have that connection. They didn't give it to us. So we had to call no for it, for them to run things for us, so we had it on, which of course was useless if you're in duty by yourself.
Right.
And it was back, so you would actually, after you gave somebody a ticket, you would go back and see if they actually had a suspended license or not. So you could actually send them another ticket, for the things that you missed. Yes, I'll scan, go there. So.
And I'll volunteer to start the, create, create a secret.
Okay.
I like to.
Mike, since you asked about the defining the by, where by law committee expectations, did you have expectations in mind or you just think somebody ought to do it?
Making sure that you, bylaws don't conflict each other.
Well, I mean, may, maybe, I mean, depending on what it is, like, you know, I'm like flat out right now, but if we're talking about like March or so, you know, depending on like what month we're talking about, like it's, I'm, you know, interested in the bylaw process.
So is it, is it fair to say the financial policies and procedures will ask the finance team to come up with, to come up with recommendations?
Yeah.
Right?
Give us that, yeah.
Okay, so, select board policies and procedures, and to start with. Well, Brandon, you're gonna do that on your own and.
Jason? Yeah, Tagby. Ben? Yeah, I wonder if there's a framework.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna put in here, I'm, I'm gonna scan what exists.
Sure.
All right, so I'm gonna scan.
So obviously like even from other towns.
I'm gonna open up my manual and.
How about, how about the capital plan?
What's that, have you already, already been?
That's actually what Jody's gonna be presenting to us in the next meeting, the framework, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'll work with her.
So, yeah, capital plan priorities, so I just feel compelled to mention that the, um, the library trustees are very concerned about the, the rectory building because it has certain, like. In terms of like capital priorities, just gonna sweep that in there, cause I don't know where else it's.
All right, but for, but for the, um, the team personnel policy, Mr. H R in there for now, she's already working on it, ready to talk to her. Role and responsibilities, common sense. Working on that, it's part of the, part of the recruitment.
Yeah, I created a draft as well, I sent it to you, I'm sorry.
The draft of?
Uh, job description, but that was like, well, since it's on the list, just as far.
So five year road regions plan. Parker Highway, it's already in process. Bylaw review committee, it's already planning. Board is already assigned to some of that. Bylaw review committee, um, we're already got CMR PC. Now what about, what about the rest of us?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested in defining the expectation.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, what about, um, about the, um, we reach out to the, um, town clerk and town and moderator.
Yeah, that sounds good.
The only committee?
Well, to, to actually come up with a process, we should be, come up with some ideas.
Suggested expectations for it.
Does that make sense or no?
It does. Why wouldn't it make sense? I guess.
Like if they make recommendation to us.
You might want, maybe, I guess we could reach out to other departments. Some people are more passionate about this process.
I mean, those two individuals would be good people to have, but I think not any. You ask me, he's a volunteer.
Right, well, I'm, I'm looking for their, I guess what I'm saying is, I'd be looking for their input. Because they are the ones, because they are the ones that really have to guide the town into exercising. Because if we're going to have, if we're gonna do, read the bylaws, all the bylaws, you know, the town clerk is involved and the moderator has to stand in front of everybody and a lot of them has to do with it.
As like, yeah, I mean, she's done a lot of work, like, those bylaws and humanity.
And what, what she deals with is all of the, all of her counterparts, she has training on a regular basis. And they, they talk, this is the issue they talk about, cause that's where, and frankly, the town clerk is a go to person, then people ask questions, you know?
What would be the, I said, I feel like those are two people that should be helping the board with the committee itself.
Yes.
Right, so are we asking them to participate in the committee or are we asking them to define expectations with the committee?
I think both. I mean, let's make no mistake, we are responsible, we own all of this, right? But I'm just saying that for us, I think it's a good idea for us to reach out to the community and reach out to the different stakeholders to, to get their buy-in to it. And, and for each one of these, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is a good, I think this is a good first step.
Are you worried it's a little bit too much work or?
Well, I mean.
It, it, it's a volunteer community, you know? I just want to be really clear what we're asking them to do.
Yeah.
Finding expectations of a committee, a person participating in committee, two separate questions, right?
Well, my, my pitch would be that we did this the other night, and one of the things we talked about, and it was a recommendation about a bylaw review committee. And there's really two sides to it, is the zoning bylaws, which CMR PC through the planning board is looking at the zoning bylaws. But the general bylaws, we need to have a committee for that. And we're thinking that you two would be good people to be on that committee, but also we're looking for you to help us define direction. Because I'll guarantee you, if you ask these two people, you know, what do you think about the bylaws? Both of them are gonna be able to tell you exactly how it needs to change. Maybe not everything, but they're gonna come up with some ideas. Do we talk about low hanging fruit? Well, they know with this, I, I mean, if you can come up with some other things, I'll, I'll give you an example. We had, we actually had one that Brendan brought up about the, about the earth removal bylaw. And actually, and I, my answer back to him was that, well, I, I, you know, we discussed it and the planning board put things in place. And, you know, there are already other things that, that kind of make, we may want to repeal that. And then he came back and showed me that actually the planning board, the zoning bylaws actually go back and refer it to us. So that is some, that's, that is something that needs to be addressed.
I agree, so, but if I'm setting expectations for committee, it would be on the front of this. We want to establish a committee, we'd like both of you to be a part of it, if you, if you do. The expectation around this committee is that they view every non-zoning bylaw, any inconsistencies we, that, that, that they see. We want, uh, we want us to look for enhancements to them, we want, we want to see a comparison, how does this compare to other municipalities like us, say, are we buying at times? At the times? So review each one, come up with recommendations for changes, we want monthly check-ins with the select board in session, understand progress. We're looking to have this completed by any time.
See, I think. So moves.
Uh, but that's me, that, that to me is defining expectations. But I'm not sure I would ask, but I'm not.
I think that's fair.
I think, yeah, but that's what I think when the, the select board needs to be very clear with what we want and what we expect. And then that, Tom, Alan and Tom would absolutely be great people to jump in there and say, I've got about 60 things, I, that make a lot of sense. See, but the difference, the difference between the way you just described it and the way that I see it, you just described how if, if you were the, if you were the CEO of a corporation, you had somebody and you defined it to them. But that's not what we are. We're a town and we all deal with volunteers, we're like officials who deal with volunteers. So although you're not wrong in that, that would be, that's some good guidance. See, to me, the idea is to get, to get people. See, to me, the idea is to get, to get people, the buy-in, the whole thing about being intimidating and walking away. To me, the right thing to do is to say, hey, we've had recommendations from the professionals, which were, with DLS that said, we need to review the bylaws. And we've got, our bylaws right now are broken down into two different, if you go on the website, you'll see there's zoning bylaws and there's general bylaws. And the zoning bylaws, the planning board and Billy Eversean has done a good job of getting CMRPC, him and Jack and, and the people, he's the professionals that, that, you know, we got through grants or anything else to work with him. So CMRPC is gonna work on at, at least the zoning bylaws, maybe they're gonna work on the general ones too, I don't know. But I do know that the town clerk and the moderator, both at different times have come to me, talked to me about bylaws. So before I even go as far as to define expectations, because I'm not a professional, not, I mean, we're trying to run this thing. But they, they have a lot more experience in this day-to-day, especially the, the town clerk than I do. So before I even go that far to say, this is what, it's okay to say, I think this is what we need to do, but I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we're there to specific, to that degree of specificity. I think what we need to do is go to the town clerk and say, hey, you were kicking around this around the other night, we're, we're told that we need to take a look at the general bylaws and, and get some feedback from. And, and unless, you, you may be absolutely right, um, but.
That, that we're, then we're not establishing a committee.
No, that, yeah.
But we're, no, but our, our says, we want to establish a bylaw review committee, so that's not our objective.
Well, no, no, but what I'm saying is, but be, but before we establish the committee, I guess, I guess you could say these two are the beginnings of that committee. And then what are the committee gonna do? Well, let them, let us, let them tell us what they think should be done, only because they're professionals.
But, but all, all I said was you're gonna review each bylaw and then tell us what your recommendations, that's literally what I said, so how's that not giving them? You know, carte blanche, but all I need is to put some expectations around and wanna try to get what's done within.
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to see what, what their thoughts are.
Right, I mean, so maybe we, like, some of these items are reading, this one is one where I wonder about inviting them to a select board meeting where it's an agenda item and we ask them to give input on it and then potentially like formalize the expectations at that meeting where they've had a chance to like prepare some thoughts.
Yeah, but we guide them into that first event, then at that first event, we can settle.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm suggesting.
I know, I think we're overthinking.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I. Well, I, 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 no, I, I agree, all I'm saying is to, to establish a bylaw review committee, well, this, this two people, the, the roles that I think would be good. And just, and let them define what, what they need to do, because we talked about low hanging fruit, what needs to be done right away? And it may be for them that, well, there's, you know, these are, these are three or four things that need to be changed right away. And, and by going through that process to begin to establish a procedure, that's, that's where it comes from.
Okay.
It still strikes me that that's something that will need to go to a, like, be on an.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. But I think, I, I think what we're doing tonight is enough to, to start it.
Capture.
Which is, I guess what we're trying to do here is just to get us, you know, the old, the old saying, you can't, you can't steer a parked car.
Right, well, I guess, yeah.
Just wanna get moving. And I think this, by Tom reaching out to a couple of people and telling them, we're thinking about this, what are your thoughts on it? And then, and then. Let them tell us. Right, come and tell us.
So I, I think I still agree with the sentiment to give them a time to tell us. So that they can time box. I don't know what that is.
That's also an ongoing committee, this shouldn't go away, right?
Well, it doesn't exist, but yeah.
No, but I mean, I'm saying, you've got the initial, you know, review of the existing bylaws, we all know there's some challenges.
Yeah.
But would there be a, an expectation of the capital planning committee? There's, the bylaw review committee might be established to review the bylaws, so it may not actually dispend.
So that, that is something I see in a lot of town administration, but job descriptions as well. Stay up to date with current laws and practices and us just uncovering that need to change bylaws as practices change. And maintaining is easier.
And if you, if you, if you maintain it, would you want, would that be, uh, something?
Oh, yeah.
If that's the case, and this is, if this is, once again, setting expectations, we're, we're gonna say this is not incorrect. We think that this is more a logic-based committee effort to review the existing bylaws, because the TA might be the role that maintains.
Maintains it.
I don't know. To me, to, to me, part of that is, I, I, I think you're right, I think it's an ongoing thing. And it's, it's establishing a procedure, because what, what happened, we just had a recent where, you know, somebody wanted to, they wanted to put this bylaw in place, right, for, um, you know, for canvass or for solicitation, right? And then, well, how do you do that? How do you, well, it would be nice to say, well, if you, you know, because obviously, um, you know, we wanna facilitate or help residents to come up with these ideas, and it's much easier if we have a procedure where they can actually go to the board or go into this committee and then.
You're, you have an expectation, actually, it's different than mine. No, I'm serious, this is a good discussion, you know, a bylaw review committee is reviewing it, but Mike, Mike, you talk about it. From this review committee, you can see where there'll be a standardized policy procedure to maintain, review or recommend new bylaws. Which is nothing with you committee, it's not the review of the bylaws, but you see an other one. So maybe that should be part of our expectation is by doing this, Ellen and Tom, we think we can actually, you know, instantiate a procedure so that at one time those.
You know what I mean? Getting your recommendation from the board, from the committee.
Improve the bylaws and establish a procedure for bylaw development, does that?
Yes, and, and again, it goes on to the, there's already state law in place about how many, how anybody can put something, but, but based on just the law, it, it turns, it can turn into a train wreck.
So, so what's good about that is that when you talk to the town clerk and moderator, you can kind of, so we're kicking around, two things we see is output. As you, what do you think? One is, let's improve our bylaws to make them twenty-first century bylaws.
And the system internally consistent.
Yeah, we can be, you know, speed chasing, all the speed sheet or making bylaws out.
Yeah, well, it's like they need to have a mission statement and it's bad, you know, like they're starting a business and it's going to be.
So the two things, review the existing bylaws and number two, develop a procedure. Use the finance for tickets. Awesome, no one has to take that, you just did it.
And I wrote it down, so, yeah.
No, I'm actually serious.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Do you guys wanna quickly look at some of the type of the hanging ones, like, okay, include HR officer and collective bargaining negotiations?
And the team is to.
And team major, team most approach, that's something I think just aside, okay, this is what we're gonna do.
Well, well, again, that's something that, that's something that the team-based approach has, has really always been there. It's always been the, the department head, like whether it's the police, the liar, or even the highway. Always had the opportunity to deal with, with labor council and, and TA. But yeah, HR, I think the difference is we didn't have, oh, it's the longest time we didn't have an HR person. But, but this, you're actually right, the HR person should be involved, because the other ones are.
Is that just a policy? That's not a hard one.
No, I mean, that's one where, that's core, let's just do it.
Do we have a policy for how policies are initiated? You have to do a motion to instantiate a policy process? Or is that just internal operational framework?
Well, that, you know, but it's not, I think that's kind of the definition of low hanging fruit, we don't even have to. We don't even have to vote on that. I mean, the idea is, would everybody agree that just wanna ask the HR person to, to sit in and, and consult about negotiations?
Ask. Who else, anyone else need to be a member of the team?
Besides HR, TA and select.
Well, I think, I think the department head.
Yeah, the relevant department head.
Right, and, and labor council, obviously.
You actually reach out, you should, because I was surprised when I saw that, to a point, so at what point did they? Is that, I was wondering a bit about the finance director. In the study.
No, no, not, the only reason for the finance director with it, I mean, really, for, for us, the treasurer is making sure that there's, that the funding piece.
I, I, my point is, I'm surprised I saw a team-based approach, because like you, I said, well, I know multiple people involved, so what is, what if the DLS is our team? Are the members of the team that we.
Of course.
Town administrator, like, I mean, typically.
Yes, correct, and, and I, I can tell you, because I had that, because I had that discussion.
Also, under the team-based approach, I mean, typically town administrator wasn't involved, so it's a.
Well, I forgot to say, oops.
Sorry, yeah.
Thought I'd take that one. Type like that.
What, what is the fee schedule?
So like.
For permits?
Current permits and stuff.
Like alcohol and?
So, so cost to administer.
Sorry, you, sorry for the new guy question.
I mean, I wonder, is that?
I put that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like, normally, like, hey, every year, she, money, money out. I don't know, what do you guys?
Uh, do we normally review that as part of the select board budget process?
Well, normally, well, to, to, normally what we, what would be done is the the budget each year, obviously, whatever, if it, if it's a year that there's not contract negotiations. We know what, we know what the impact is of a contract, so that's kind of built into salaries. However, there is, there is, every year, there is a, we have a, you know, a contract that's up, usually set aside a certain amount of money for contract negotiations. And a lot of that is governed by two and a half. Like I pointed out, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I mean, we know from, based on, you know, two and a half plus new growth, right? So we know what kind of money we have to work with, you know what different expenses are, so we come up with an other, what we got. And if we're gonna do anything more than that, well, that's, we're gonna do an override, so those are, those are where the numbers come from. So, fee schedule, I think, I think the fee schedule, I think that's something that, this is my suggestion, that starts with the chairman, board or committee that deals with those fees. So for instance, you know, when it comes to, you know.
Dog licenses goes to town clerk, that sort of.
Yeah, she, well, that kind of thing, I think she, she just has to establish. But for instance, billing, the billing department, when it comes to, or, or when somebody does, you know, has an inspection for septic system. You know, are they charging enough to cover all the engineering fees? So that, so that one is, you know, that would be something to.
Then don't we need to ask those individual departments when they use their budgets to review that?
Yeah, that's normally, that's normally how it happens.
Are you enthralled yet?
Actually, it's kind of interesting to watch what we struggle with. Quite frankly. I will, I will tell you this, I have, you know, I have, this is the first time that I'm doing this. And also, the years that I've, I don't remember select we're doing this way before.
Well, you're doing a good job, I do this at work all of the time, it's part of my job, and you're doing a good job, yeah.
Yeah, there's usually a viewer, a good structure framework, needless strategy, implementation. So what else?
Brendan and Mike with the Excel sheet there.
Coming in, right, well, very helpful.
We've been talking about it for a couple of months, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so the assess and implement PO system and so, like, is there a general? This keeps coming up that we don't have like. Well, it's all with the, the, we don't have a general IT department either, right? And so we have to rely on our contracted IT services to do a lot of stuff, but we also rely on internal employees to handle a lot of different apps and stuff.
One of the, one of the issues, you know, long-term, it's not low hanging fruit, you know, we just signed a two-year contract, right? But for instance, the way it was explained to me, that the town abupda interfaces with the school. And the school.
Handle IT?
Yes, school, I wanna say they used to have, I, I, I don't wanna speak, I'm not sure exactly how they do it, but, but there were some things that they have staff deal with, or other things that they contract.
Yeah, I know some places sometimes have like, you know, essentially the DPW and, you know, the, the IT department is part of that, because they're handling maintenance, traditionally, it's building. So like, just, I don't have anything more to say on that than that, but I keep recognizing the fact that we don't have like an internal IT creator and it means that IT decisions are happening in individuals.
So let me ask, can we flip the page now and then start talking about these operational issues with, um, you know, what the health, aren't we, what are the things that we're talking about? Are you ready to, to do that or do you wanna keep anything else on this?
These are all the DLS?
Yes. Came out of the DLS.
And by now, we mean before, we're starting, we're starting all the stuff we listed here.
So.
This is, before we flip the pages, this is on the, correct, and also this is on the consolidation of personnel files.
Yes, that's, right, well, that's, that's already, that's, well, I'll give you, I'll give you a good example, um, just, and this is in a golden, um, when we're talking about sick time. And, you know, how, how it all works, how it accrues, how this gets tracked.
Right.
Um, in the, in the, it's as simple as there's a software program with a box accrue, don't accrue. And it was clicked for some and not for others. And the personal policy definitely says it, but then when it came up to me was, there were two different numbers. Because one of them had been proposed, but it was never formally voted on. And it's something that we need to address. Yeah.
That's more of an audit.
I guess, something. Let's put in a meeting. Should just agree, we're gonna do that, it's not called, do you want us to order something?
Yes, well, I think, well, I think, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because what I was thinking about, when we talked about these department headed meetings, I also wanted to put in here quarterly financial reports.
Yeah, that's right, do you wanna put that as established core or are we just gonna say that's, that's something?
Yeah, because I think the TA reviews are probably the best, you know, feature add that we've had. Get that on as a part of the.
A part of it, quarterly financial report, those can be, iterate through those, I'm not sure.
We might have to establish an example first.
Or just see what they come with and, and based on questions, right, iterate.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, because there's gonna be a level of detail, we probably won't be.
We did those when first go around, it literally is going to start a lot, get line item budgets.
Well, let me just, let me just, let me just, let me just say this, I don't know if you've ever sat down with Jody and gone through Excel and, she's a wizard. And I, I have a feeling that shield, when it comes to that particular issue, shield nailed. Exactly what it is.
Green happy face, red sad face, blah. Come on, man, you're color coding this Excel sheet right here.
Bylaw review, PO system and CPO kind of go together. And that kind of goes into TA, those responsibilities, so, you okay with me going on a team, those responsibilities?
Well, it has to be. In, in other words, in, in order. In other words, in order for procurement to be done properly, we need to have a, we need to have someone who's trained and certified. And, you know, our current intern town administrator, you know, had been through the procurement process. I'm pretty sure Jody is also through it right now. She isn't already. But it was explained to me, you know, by the, by the, by an investigative inspector general's office. I was thinking of some of the implementation of that and some of the consequences of this time, so.
All right.
But that, but that feeds right back into these financial policies and procedures.
Yeah.
Do you want to insert key?
Oh, no. Senior center.
Oh, you didn't do that purpose? I thought you were advancing.
That it gets underway, we're supporting this.
The capital plan.
I know it would be a part of it.
Right, I mean, it sort of feels like it needs to be sort of capital plan priorities.
I'm really saying this for, you know, our, our audience. Make sure you heard what you wanted to hear.
Okay. I listen.
I know.
I mean, I also want to mention again, the, so it sent in the, the D L S recommendations to consider that, like, what was it? Risks and managed risk and maximize value. So like, just, it's been pointed out that the directory is like, it hasn't, so like, I think that, that needs to be, like, come up.
Well, how do we get that knowledge?
What's that?
How, so we get in summaries for the financial department. The senior center, oh, you guys have been coming a lot, but like, where, you know, the, do we need summaries from the major problems in the town?
Right, I mean, well, I feel like, right, we need like the, the capital.
So, so library, library and directory resolution, we need to.
And also the, that, the police station building show, I feel like there are like these, these towns need to be like the.
Well, I'll give you another one while we're talking about it. We had a few conversations about the high, about, about parks.
Right.
And where they put the lawnmowers and everything else. Well, you, you all have never been up there, but if you get on Hopeville Street, you take a left on Trask Road. We have a piece of property that was clean to us, right? And it's actually, I have the building inspector working on it right now, but on that property, besides this old farmhouse that is a duplex. Right? There's also a large barn that's electrified, has a lift. Yes. And all it takes, that's being booked into, because that may be, maybe this name building that could be repurposed. I have counsel and building inspector looking at it.
So just a couple of points. So to me, the senior center, I'm thinking about, basically, your senior center exchange, your project, your role would be to bring to the floor the proposal. And that's what I would say, right?
That engineering?
Yeah, so that, and then you vote to fund, to the funding.
Right, right.
And then it'd be, but then, then it's also a capital plan line item, we need to get that capital plan.
Right.
There's another item on it, master plan about adaptive reuse and action, developing inventory of all common buildings. So you see the directory resolution show up there.
Right.
And the, not the bar, not, not the, my point is this, it's like the capital plan, so you capture some of this stuff.
It needs like a capital plan.
But is there action running there?
Right.
Library will be capital things, they will spend, build out the library to some extent.
At some point, but I think it's just, it's, yeah, the directory, I think it's apparently different at this point. So like, anyhow, I just want to get that on the radar, like wherever it can spin.
So when I look at this now, right, we get a half a page of, of this page.
Right.
Right? Now we've got a laundry list, so we need to kind of somehow look at this list and say, to sort of figure out what are like, are we going to take an action on the directory resolution or are we going to have a plan, planning committee start to work with?
Right, well, I mean, I feel like, well, I mean, it says, you know, capital plan and priorities. I think those are like a list of some priorities to start with.
You can put them under that.
Yes, that's what, that's, yeah, that's where Mike's drawn the error. No, 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 there, you see that the, you know, the string, the border board.
Capital plan.
Those are some points.
Senior center, library, directory resolution, trash property, cemetery. Right, that's why kind of I have to serve senior center is probably two for one is this is the year we want to deliver. I think, but again, I think to define, redefine, or come back to what we're trying to do tonight. I think we're identifying a lot of things. What's, what's clear is we need to do this again in another one to kind of go from here. But I think at this point, I really, I don't think we need to deal immediately, because I think some of the thing in this master plan are already captured in this.
Yep.
And, but I really would like to drill down on the second page about what we talked about last week, every organization. So I think we've gotten enough, unless, is there anything else on any action items that there that you want to?
The only ones that are remaining on D L S, biggest one here, rest of the town traffic.
And that's.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's downward.
Yeah, exactly. So you want to make that decision, like, hey, that's not something we're going to.
You want to put that, you want to put that in the notes here?
Exactly.
Yeah, well, there already is, D L S.
Twenty six, which we, I think we're all agree with that.
Yes.
I think we'd be much better prepared.
That's a.
And as far as defining, defining fincom responsibilities, that's, that's actually, and also be for that bylaw committee.
Yeah.
Yes, so if you want to put defined fincom responsibilities, you can put in there bylaw committee.
And the financial management portion of the consolidating that we're not.
No, no.
The succession plan. That seems like they're also, I'm a town administrator.
I mean, I think they said succession plan for one, one role, one shouldn't be for all roles.
Yeah, yeah.
Succession plan, maybe.
Right, right.
So E A should be planning the succession plan for all critical boards in town. Maybe should we just.
I can tell you what the succession plan was about in the description. Yeah, should you ever notice, I was getting phone calls. Succession plan is.
Yeah. Thanks. So I got, I think we got with the D L S. That's basically all the time. I still love.
Sorry. Sixty hours of copy.
I don't think I have to call this other thing.
No. Well, let's talk about, just for lack of a public works. So what are the things that we, we currently? Stop sharing for a second.
Yeah, it's surveyor transitioning to question.
We had, we talked about the highway surveyor, water department, water, health, parks.
You know, building maintenance, so we got to include that.
Yeah.
Extra item. I think we catch it. We stuffed in their presentation, right?
Yeah, I agree. It was, it was very, it was very useful.
That was kind of, when I thought about building, I almost thought of that as facilities. Because I could even see where some of the responsibility for upkeep of property.
Well, just facilities.
Right, those facilities.
Yeah, and most times I have facilities. But I'm always thinking of even, even the grounds. You can make a case that the grounds are the facilities too. So, so I was just thinking about what we saw and I was looking at the way the structure, I said, huh, I could see things being flipped around, something like that. And, but yeah, I think, I think facilities, you know, managements.
Well, I'll give you a good, I'll give you a good anecdotal example. It was, we had somebody here, again, the same person that's been to H V A C, we're looking at former. And, you know, there are, you know, the answer that the town administrator, the acting town administrator gave was that those vents that were in there were just for the, you know, were just for the, for the boil, for the front. I said, well, yeah, that's, that's what gets fresh air and it's got an air exchanger. But another issue is that there's a moisture problem in that, in that bottom floor. The person came in from the state to check on the, to check on the radio, but it was the radar issue. He talked about those moisture issues and how, you know, there is, that is an issue that when you talk about ARCA money, that's something else that we need to look at that to me because it's a potential health problem. And the way it was explained is there is no, there is no slab on that. So there's just porous whatever under the rug and it needs to be addressed. And I, I'm not sure who we have currently, you know, we need to look at a bigger picture than just someone's coming in with a banding.
Is that a part of the backside of a building?
Well, well, no, because that, what they, no, what happened was the backside of the building, the elevator was, got added on twenty-some-one years ago on top of the well, because that was the only place that they could make it supposedly A D A compliant. You know, and at that particular point in time, we really didn't have a, a strong town administrator or a town administrator. It was actually the town accountant that took, you know, to her credit, you know, she basically stood up and did things that no one else was doing. Right? But again, that's all we need to do. We need to look at these issues and think, figure out how we're going to. And to me, the biggest, the biggest, the two biggest things that I heard of the conversation was number one, for the water department is we need to look at doing some things in-house. They actually seem to be properly billing for it and they've got money going on so they can do some of these things. They can actually realize some savings.
That water department duty is pretty interesting, I think.
And the other thing, the other thing I think is pulling, you know, talking about highway, parks, building maintenance, tying them together. With that. Question is, what, what can we do, what can we do immediately? I think the first step is we need to have a meeting with labor council to talk about. Right? So, so the media, but you'd agree that the, the basic premise of consolidating the public works resonated, resonated with me. I think, yeah, we should move forward on that. So if you agree on that, that's sort of starting, right?
I think it's having us on future growth.
Yeah, I think the, like, just, just sit in discussion with labor council, that gets into the how, where, you know, that's like, we need to start to kind of get into what can be done.
I think there's a dynamic too, Mike, when you, you look at that list, water, water, health, parks, you've got elected committees. So I think the, the however this gets done, you got, kind of like when I said we, we policy the T A executes our policy, I would think some of the board of health, for example, set policy, be that a committee. The operational aspects would fall under the town operations. Does that make sense?
Yeah, how do you? Let's just be clear, the only, the only piece about board of health was trash. Okay? That was the, that was the piece that we were talking about potentially, and what, what we were told was in other towns, it was actually, you know, pulled into this whole public works piece. But the big discussion, trash, and I'll, I'll just kind of refresh your memory maybe here for the first time. To give you a quick history, we were at a point where we had a, we had a town dump. And then what happened is, it was actually Joyce Gilmore was on the water health and the person who owned the dump started bringing in trash into Mendon from Boston. And suddenly it was way to bit. And what happened is, and what happened is, well, they shut it down. And then we came up, we actually made a deal with a transfer station in Hopeville. So everybody in Mendon who had trash would actually take their trash cans they used to bring to the dump on Saturday. And now they brought them to Hopeville, to the transfer station, they got rid of it there. And then we had to just start doing recycling too. And then what happened was because we had a budget crunch. Where the select board solved it is, we just took trash and took it off budget and told everybody, you know what, you're on your own. And provide a list of companies that would get rid of trash. And everybody actually hired somebody to get rid of it. Or, I don't know, I suppose some people brought it to work and threw it in the dumpster or. You know, but, but that's what happened is it just, it just ceased to be something that the town handled. And then as time went on, then, then what they did was they established a trash fee. They established, you know, a, made a deal with, and it actually started a wheel over there up in Millbury because they wanted to start a, you know, an incinerator. So we made a deal with all these, with all these other towns in the distortion that we could get rid of our trash. But then it became an issue of, okay, that's where you're going to get rid of it. But how do you get it from your house to there? So what happened is, we were going to, so we, we actually put a trash fee in place that everybody who wants it, right? Can, the board of health is going to oversee this and they signed a contract with a, with a trash hauler. Right? Now, this past year, what we looked at was when we had to do a new contract and the cost was going up, I talked pretty extensively with the, you know, the board of health chair. And, and the issue was that they have a truck that goes through town. We, and, you know, the different, different houses, different areas every day. But the explain was that that truck had enough capacity to pick up the trash from all of the fam, of all of the households. Not just the ones that's doing. So it said, it would actually, it would actually reduce the costs per household if they picked up all of the trash. Because the truck has enough room, so it didn't have to expand route, that's the expensive part. And then we already have a deal with the tonnage, so we can get rid of it. The problem was, so we talked about, one possibility was to get rid of printing bills, to get rid of, and just build it into the tax rate. And then what happens is everybody, it, it's actually a service we provide with your taxes. And if you want to, you can continue to pay, you know, one of the other ones that aren't in the, you, you can actually pay to have your own trash picked up. But you're still going to, it's still going to be in your taxes anyways. It's going to give people that option. The problem with doing that is it would have to be put into the budget and it would trigger a two and a half override. So one of the things to think about is that, no, nobody, you know, we need to stop swearing. Nobody wants to talk about that. But also, one of the other thoughts is if we have to, if we get to a point where, and I believe it's inevitable, we're going to have to, we're going to have override at some point. Again, with the school and other, other costs. As a matter of fact, everybody knows about inflation, it's gone up the last couple of years. You know, it hasn't, it hasn't caught up to us yet, but it's about. Right? But that might be a time to look at some of this. Because one of the things it does is, the big thing with the board of health and trash is it gets rid of the bills. Because now there's not separate bills we have to, we have to send, you know, separate money to collect. It's just, it's built into your, it's built into your taxes.
Forty-five hundred dollars it costs us. Five thousand dollars.
Yeah. I'm a little hangover. And to me, I. And to me, I would, you know, and this is something I'd like to take a hold of this group right here, right now. Do you think it would be a good idea to put a non-binding question on the ballot? It may, to see if people would want to. Switch.
So I, non-binding, I guess I'm not really familiar with like non-binding.
Well, in other words, in other words, what I'd like to do is to, I like to gauge the, in other words, I'm trying to get, get the word out, engage people's idea.
Right, I guess I wonder, like, you know, like the clicker, you know, when we try out the clickers, like the, the town meeting, they have that question, like, have you? Well, it could be, I mean, it could be like, yeah.
Well, that's why.
Well, so like, I mean, I guess how does that work with the ballot though?
We just, well, that's, that's the beauty of it, is you just, number one, that could actually increase participation. But, you know, is it going to increase for everybody? Or is it just going to increase?
There's really a downside to it because it's not, it's literally.
Well, there's a bit of a downside, which is that we don't explain it well enough. We have to field a lot of questions about what we're saying.
But see, to me, that's, that's the gem. Because it forces us to explain. Because what happens is it creates, wait a minute, what's, what's this all about? And then we can, we can talk to, yeah, well, let's discuss it. And people start asking questions, what's on the ballot? What's this question?
Before, we have to talk about it a lot, I guess, with the language being for that meeting.
The only thing that makes me slightly nervous is like every time you re-sign a contract, that gentleman, the intention pushing to change. Nothing to do about that. But, I mean, I grew up in a town where it was part of the tax law and it's the most popular.
Thanks.
Very close.
It's thirty dollars a month right now per person.
And we get, we get, so we get two bills, we get two bills a year, right? And it went from, it was, I want to say it was about, I think it was about one forty, now it's like two hundred. Twice a year.
It's a little more unless you're retired.
It's what, two, it's like two eleven?
There's also another issue that they're dealing with, which is that the trash pickup for residential, that contract is paid for by those people, right? But the contract for the, oh, I'm sorry. But that also includes the contract for the municipal pickup, waste pickup. So the only people currently paying the waste pickup in the town are people who pay for waste pickup at their own home. It's one contract.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, it's not, putting trash into the budget does not necessarily mean you need to override for just that.
No.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're talking about trash, where you're saying. I agree with you, I think at some point we can get a little more broadly, we want to do all these things with town services. That's probably going to require some level of override at some point, but.
But huge, but when we, we looked at, I looked at the numbers and I talked to the, to the principal assessor of it. And I said, you know, based on the current, and I don't have the number in front of me, based on the current cost of trash with the contract. We knew that they were about, apparently there's about a, about two hundred, two hundred households are currently not paying a bill, don't have their trash picked up by the town services. So if we were to agree to start picking up at every household, so those ones we picked up as well, and took that money that now the trash goes outside the budget and we added that into our budget, just that process of adding that bill, that part into the bill would, is more than a two and a half percent increase of the total bill. So just doing that would require an override. Because it would increase the tax rate. Even it is, it's, we're not just, it's not like, well, we're already paying it here.
No, 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 I understand that, but what you're saying is, no one's been able to tell me how much it costs with the trash contract.
It's four hundred and six, Mike's right, it's four hundred and six dollars per year.
Per, per household. Right, I'm just saying how, for the total cost. I just wondered what the bill, what we pay the trash person.
Yeah, the contract, if I'm remembering now, the contract, I want to say it was about eight hundred thousand.
You're paying.
Yes. Yes, I'll figure it out. There's, there's, you know, about forty-two hundred people, right? So there's about a thousand households. Yeah. Four hundred dollars per household.
Trash is big business.
Yeah. Yeah, it's about eight hundred, about eight hundred K. If you add in the other households, it goes up to about a million. So do the math. On a current budget, right? It's, it's, it's close. It was close, but we did, the point is there was no over-.
Well, you add in the other households, it should be eight K.
Right? No, no, actually, no, the extra, the extra, the extra cost isn't the trucking piece, it's the extra tonnage. Because there's two pieces, there's tonnage and then there's the trucking cost. I was told the trucking cost would be, it would be a wash. Because they're already going around, for him to stop and pick up, the only extra cost for the trucking was going to be with the extra cans. Because we get those fancy cans now.
Right, those cans.
Right, I love those cans, right? But then, right.
They are really low, my dog doesn't like it.
Yeah, not a lot, there are a lot of the other ones in the cities. They still have the dragging.
Yeah.
Right, but anyways, I mean, but my point is, that this is, that's just, I'm just bringing everybody to the speaking discussion again. You know, and there was a lot of pushback because there were people that liked to, you know, there were people, a lot of people who had businesses in town. Right? Who have a dumpster, you know. They, you know, they, they didn't want to have to pay for trash because they, they bury it within their business for, or whatever, whatever option that they have, you know. And the rest of the story is that it used to be that one of the big things before is, so we single screen. Because a lot of these other contractors, you know, you didn't have to separate any parts. But we don't do that anymore, hey. Right? Because now, now it's changing for us too.
So Brendan was just, you know, we have a base contract and then we pay per ton. So that's adjustable based on how much waste we all.
Looks like hardly five hundred, two thousand, I'm sure. For the twelve, it's a hundred and forty thousand. Waste disposal, which was. And that's anticipated, you set a certain amount of tonnage.
I'm like, looking at the time, I'm like, I don't know.
Well, we might have to, we might have to start, we're missing a section, I don't know, the third page or something. We got, so we've got the DLs portion by our time travel.
I feel you should feel good about that.
So, we can just go like this. So.
I just, I should have asked, why don't we just take a five minute, instead of me just doing, I should have said that, I'm sorry. There's two of them right here, right through this door, and it doesn't lock when you come back.
All right, Mike, I took my break a little bit.
Did you? All right, sorry about that.
Interesting to watch all the things you've gotten.
A lot of stuff going on. Busy town.
You're trying to get a framework in this though, makes it all make sense.
Yeah, instead of going from like meetings to being making decisions, we can maybe think about some stuff in advance.
Well, the interesting, that thing you're talking about, requirements getting together, never be involved with town politics other than as a bloke. Any minute, I've been here for a year or something. But watching how apartment interaction, when you sort of synergy possibly could be, these town meetings, apartment meetings, I think everybody that I bumped into, I thought that was really great.
I would argue that a lot of that came out of us beginning to record and broadcast meetings.
Could be.
Because before that, it was all strung in secrecy.
Yeah. Well, I think also there was an operational style and trying to do a master plan, trying to do capital, trying to figure out the finance. Each, each department should be, I'm used to public life. And we had to do that on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis. Where you go, where you going to, what are you going to do this year, next year? How are you doing?
Yeah, it's up to us to set ourselves accountable. Which is tough.
That's how it is in my company.
My company runs like a whole bunch of startups.
Well, that could be fun a little bit, yeah. Second, organizational roles, when you ask to create your own roles, to show how it fits.
Absolute priority model.
All right, so my, my thought about all of this, you know, the only, the only piece with water health again, I think, is the, is the trash trees. Right? But for these, and actually, I don't think there's any other overlap with water, oh, and I also, I'm sorry, about. Tree ward too, right? So the only overlap here, just think so, and, and, you know, water department doesn't really overlap anywhere else if you read it right now. Except that.
People started using stuff.
Well, it still falls into, into.
What is, what is the plan fulfilling the role of, you know, what has been highway surveyor? And I mean, feeling, you know, I'm, I'm definitely like, I, I, I like the idea of doing this, you know, combined Public Works, but I feel, you know, I mean, that role should be, I feel like whoever is in that role would want to be involved in the process.
Well, my, my takeaway from everything that I've seen is that what we, what we really need is a foreman. Who's actually, you know, does, we have these work order based system. We have a foreman that coordinates all of that, but then above that.
Right.
You know, you have, and the question is, this is my question, is do we, you know, in the, in the current iteration of it, does the town administrator maintain that role? Of, you know, whether the, you know, okay, what's the foreman do? Well, you know, in a widget time, they maintain, they maintain the roads, meaning salt, sand, plow, that's what they do. When they're not salting, sanding and plowing, they're currently right now, you know, repairing the roads. So, you know, there, there is a whole stormwater management piece to it, which has been a big issue for years. And I, I know I'm incredibly simplifying the whole discussion on what it is. But to me, that's what I see, especially based on the budget and everything else. And that's why I think if you add another role in there, now what they're doing is they're, they're, you know, basically interfacing with the, with whoever it takes, you know, this piece, you know, becomes, you know, a foreman. Right? Instead of a surveyor. And then we have these two, but then, you know, as far as maintenance, you know, now you've got, now you have somebody does, you have a person who does the expanded control.
Yeah, I like the organization thing. So I look at, I do think there's a, did you say superintendent, just that's the term.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I do, because I look at that, think about it, that's consolidated. There's a significant administrative management piece.
Yes.
I don't think a TA can be responsible for managing that many resources.
If you, well, I think, well, let me just back up right now, because we talked about effectively, right? Because right now, we haven't let the tree ward, so that's not going to go away right away. As far as building meetings, facilities, that doesn't even exist right now. You have each department that is handling their own, their own building, right? What about the lawns? Well, right now, we have parks and they're handling all the lawns. But I, but I don't think it's sustainable. I, I.
So I guess we might be talking about two, I'm thinking more in future state, if you could create a, a public works department, you have a department head of public works, which would be that superintendent. And then the, the operational.
That's the columns.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, yes, and then I think what came, but, but that director is not, is not a foreman. Right?
No.
And then you. Well, that's why I'm saying, I drew all this, right? That director, to me, is this person right here.
Okay, well, I think that's what Landon was saying.
That's what I was trying, yeah.
Right, but right now.
But if we're just functionally. Right, because right now. Okay, so the question is, do we need to make changes right now? I think, Landon, you were saying, would it make sense to bring that role in in order to make changes?
I mean, I have, I have a couple of thoughts. One is like, it feels like the town administrator would have a lot of valuable input for this kind of major restructuring. And so it's hard. I mean, we're, hopefully we're going to have that person in January and this should, should have been an ideal, and this would be like, okay, there's a really long list to do, we're going to be doing right, right into budget season, but like this, I think, potentially could affect a lot of budgets.
Right, well, I guess.
So like, I guess, but I did wonder about, you know, whether, like, I mean, we, we, we have, we currently just have that someone in the interim position.
But what I'm saying is, the, the person, the job that that interim person is doing.
Yes.
Is not going to be the same job that that square on the right side. That's what I'm getting, okay?
Yes.
So I'm saying that, I think that, you know, we've got basically long-term, longer term, we've got two roles of them. We've got, you know, basically the, the person who's, you know, who replacing the highway surveyor. You know? And then we have a director of overseeing building maintenance, facilities. You know, the parks, meaning the, not, and not so much parks as far as, you know, like, like the summer program, the beach.
Actually, I have, I have a question for us, what has we done on that one?
Okay, well.
Yeah.
It's back on.
Well, I mean, I, I think I would want all employees, if you were up at town, whether it's summer or not, to be under the TA operation.
Correct.
And so the idea that you have parks department headed outside of the TA didn't make sense to me. Going directly to the parks department, no, a dotted line to the parks department to discuss programming and how to implement, absolutely. But all that within the public works.
Yes, well, it's no different than the way, you know, if you go back to when Ken O'Brien was on the select board, he created, he was the chair, he created the owner chart for the principal assessor. The principal assessor had a dotted line to the board of assessors and had a solid line to the town administrator. Because when, when he was, when he was the selector, his board came up and said that the, the principal assessor, although statutorily reported to the, you know, to the board of assessors, kind of like, you know, remember we talked about figuring out what the overlay number is, right? So the number has to, what happens is the principal assessor comes to the board of assessors and says, look, this is what the overlay, this is my recommendation that that should be. And the board of assessors votes and makes a decision. So statutorily, it's there, but when it came to day-to-day operations, according to his order chart, the principal assessor answered to day-to-day to the town administrator.
I just want to say that my formalized last time was important. I was gonna say that might have been formalized last time, wasn't it, Ward, because we keep performance reviews. If the revisive.
For what?
So that assessors had input into jeans review as well as the square.
And further, and again, I don't really wanna talk about being individual as much as a role. But, but one of the, one of the, um, one of the things in the recommendations is develop a succession plan for the principal assessor to identify how to solidify success in kind of operations. Which, one of the recommendations is, and this, this came to the heart of what Kevin Rudman was talking about, you know, he said it twice now, that that recommendation was just a recommendation, not, not, you know, but that was clearly.
That's why I reworded that in spreadsheet to say succession planning in general, which is a, it's a good idea.
Yeah, so it's, so it's something we need to, but, but that's getting beyond what we're talking about here, is.
You need like a couple of target work charts that are timeline.
I don't, what I wanna do is talk about this, because I think this is something that functionally, we need to come up with a way. And they, and to me, you know, we can't do anything about tree warding.
Well, can't, 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 it's something in motion though.
Well, yeah, but, but that, I guess what I'm getting at is that's not a need.
So, so what is your expectation, like, when you said one focus on, what are you, what are you hoping to get to in the near term right here?
Because the number, my, 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 my thought is the very first thing, we need to know financially, you know, what kind of, what kind of money we have available. Then we need to decide, and then the second thing is define, because what we need to do.
Money available to do what? Anything in this space?
Yes, right, because what we've got right now is, you know, we have a, we have a highway surveyor who's making a certain salary. Right? And the question is, you know, is that, is, is the new person gonna have the same role? And, you know, what does that need to be paid? Then the question is, if we're going to come, have some synergy, combine parks and highway, right? And actually, e- e- even inside of that, pulling, um, building maintenance too, because those are the three, right? You've got highway, building maintenance, and parks, parks. Quite honestly, um, when, you know, Alan, Alan Tate, in a lot of ways, is a miracle. Because, you know, what happened is, yeah, he's maintained the highway, but if those other things needed to be done, you know, he would help highway, he would fix things for them if there was something like, oh, for instance.
So, that's like park ops, really?
Yeah, well, right, so the question is, to me, I, I think what we, what we're going is, instead of having a highway surveyor, we have almost two roles. One of them is, um, some of the highway surveyor's role is taken on with whoever's gonna oversee the parks and the building maintenance, and then below the highway survey, below that person, we have someone who's still maintaining the roads that has less responsibility and more focused responsibility.
But is that the foreman that we've been?
Yes, that, that's, that's my take on it. But I, I could be wrong, but that's my take on it.
So, the only, you, you got two sort, two, two, uh, two sources of information on this. You've got the call-in centers, grown up, very high level.
Yes.
Which does consolidate, create the workshop, right? Then you've got a more, um, introspective view that Danny John gave us last week. He's getting more into some details.
Yeah. Actually, presentation.
Well, it is some work design that, you know, so, you know, what I just heard, Mike, you say, at a minimum, in order to do any of that, you wanna understand financial implications.
Correct.
Any excess money based on current structure, what is on field, where does that leave us?
Correct.
Then you also want financial implications of what kind of synergy, uh, excess capacity or revenue do we, uh, have available to us if we consolidate?
Right.
Based on what I saw last week, there was no, uh, there might have been, uh, scale, but there wasn't really dollars being produced based on. So, operational efficiency. Yeah, but they were looking for any increase even at.
The only, the only place I think we, we need to find there is there, there is money spent every year on building maintenance. There is money spent every.
Well, there's bandwidth, it's not available to us to do work, but it's a skip. We still need to be spent.
Well, no question, but, but can it be spent more efficiently?
Okay.
But I think any. And, and an example of that, an example of that is the idea that we're paying contract to the water plant. We have a employee that says, listen, if you give me more hours, I can do some of that myself.
Yeah.
And the other thing you have to.
Band-aid here, though, Mike, because.
Yeah, I, I agree. The other thing we have to realize is that we have a parks department that has an enterprise fund for revolving account. Where there's a, I mean, a few years ago, what we actually did was we, we shut down parks. We just didn't run them some. And yes, we lost the revenue, but we actually saved some money that we put out of places. And then we brought it back again. Am I suggesting that we shut down parks? No, of course not. But when, when the conversation was brought to the town floor for parks, they established, instead of having a twenty, thirty thousand, they established two hundred thousand dollar a year revolving fund. And the townspeople gave them authority to, to handle that two hundred thousand dollars however they wanna do it. We have no say over it all. So, there's money there that could be re-taxed or used. Now, plus when we talk about other revenue sources, maybe expanding different things.
I think the revolving account is based on the collecting fees and rolling back into programs. I didn't think that was, you know, that's outside of the living, all that, right? So, they, they generate, so, if the, I don't think we could re, re, redirect that money. That would not be a source of money.
No, but what I would, but what I would argue is, you could look at those monies that's actually looking to run programs at parks, they're deciding when they're gonna spend it. I think if you, I think there is a way to, to realize some economies of scale and also, um, like, I'll, I'll give you a good example. We have new, new areas that need to be taken care of, and, and, and as well as that, we actually have some cemeteries in town that they deal with. And this perpetual care, this monies that could be, and I talked about, we actually have a piece of town property, the Brook Cemetery, right? And we need, we need a, a, a new burial. That, that is an issue that we need to deal with. A lot of people who were raising their families here, they would like to, they would like to have plots here, and there, there is none for them. That's, again, and, and, you know, fifteen years ago, there was a conversation that some of the land, um, that was some private land for sale up off of, um, um, off of Mobile Road down there, Kelly Drive and there, um, they were gonna put a cemetery. It's gonna be a private cemetery.
Was, was cemeteries under, I thought that was under parks, is that under select?
Right now, well, actually, actually, right now, um, there are some cemeteries that, you know, they're full up. And it just.
But somebody's gotta maintain.
Yeah, the town made, or some of them, believe me, when I was a kid, that was actually one of my voice-up projects.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember flagging a lot of cemeteries and talking to Sue about it, but I never really got down.
Yeah, well, for instance, if you go to the, if you go to Swanville Cemetery, there is a, there, there is a, a committee. They oversee it, and they have, they have money in the account, but it's not.
So, I mean, we.
The point is, yeah, well, that's, that, that's what I'm saying. That is, if you were to, um, set up a, a town, take town land and turn it into, and you could actually begin to sell your plots, and you would, that, that's another, that's another source of revenue. But that's another thing that needs to be overseen too. Let me ask a question. So, we're trying to figure out how to make something happen, right?
Right.
What if nothing changes? Next, we work. If we don't do anything, any of that.
I think a lot of people do work for free.
Yeah, what do you mean?
Well, I don't think it's, uh, it's like not magical that we get a lot of stuff done with less people.
A lot of things don't get worked.
Well, I mean, listen, we've been, you know, we've been operating this way for some time, right? So, when you say a lot of things won't get, I mean, when things, I mean, if we did nothing, what, what's the end? Where are roving?
Well, the short, the short answer is, the short answer is, a lot of things that Alan Tate took care of are no longer gonna get done.
But he's been.
Obviously consolidating public works, make sure Alan, I mean, if Alan, what doesn't get, like.
No, I'm not saying.
Facilities.
Facilities, okay.
And, and another thing is, um, when it comes to the, you're gonna see that the tree ward's expenses, the current tree ward's expenses are gonna be more than what Alan does. And the reason was because Alan was also the tree ward. And Alan used the synergy of, of highway and, and tree warding to get more things done.
What's interesting is he was doing the job, we're trying to figure out how to do right now, and that's, I think, the problem of continuing to do things the way we're doing it, is that that's happening everywhere in town, where people are putting in above and beyond their job descriptions in order for the town to maintain like a state, state, and by continuing to not accommodate them for another year, you just.
I'm not saying another year, what I'm saying is.
Two months, three months, a month, it doesn't matter how long.
No, no, it kind of does, because if you band-aid this thing, it's gonna break.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, so, and, and I think, I think there's some things in terms of understanding where current financial implications are, makes a lot of sense. Um, understanding or defining proposed roles, you know, not even respond, the roles and responsibilities to make sure that things are covered as a proposal makes sense.
Yeah.
Executing anything outside of collective bargaining, so in terms of highway and morale, I mean, collective bargaining is the, the, the big focus for us, I think, you know, making sure people are, feel they're being heard, if you will.
Yeah.
The TA comes on in January, we define, if we need that role, we define that role. I would say something like this, our full-time TA probably would be something we want weighing in on before we execute. That's all I'm saying. And I guess, and I guess.
No, I just was saying, I agree, like.
And, and, and my thought.
But we can get some stuff done.
Yes, but that's, that's the key. I, I think the first, based on what we defined here, and when we go to the high level from Colin, what they gave us last week.
Yeah.
I think the next step is Jody, next week, who gives us the financials, and I think we need, that's the next step, is what, what are we doing available?
So, so speaking of next week with Jody, I expect, I don't know what you're, what I'm expecting based on what we asked for, is a framework to execute a capital plan. So, that what she brings, she won't be addressing this, we understand. I mean, but I may be wrong, I don't want all your, you are all expecting Jody next. I, I had an open mind, I didn't know.
Yeah, I have not, I, 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 that's why I, what I, I did the, I, I had the same expectation I did of those, of the two that came last week, as I asked them, give me your pitch, tell me what you're thinking, tell me what your, and that's what I wanted to do in there too, is tell me what.
But that's all stuff we know, what about all the, like, there's a whole section here about the legal ramifications that were not described.
That's why, yes, but that's why I'm saying, right now is just function. Before we change any actual structure.
But do we need to, like, put any feelers out into the world to determine if there's something?
Labor, labor council.
Yes, that's what, that's what we're, that's what.
Next step?
Yes.
Okay.
That's already, that's already in the, like, like I, one of the things I said, with, because let's, we all know that the same person who's doing parks is also on water, and he wanted, he's the one that wanted to do the hydrants. So, I told him, talk to your council, because I've already talked to our council, and they're gonna, so, I've already, I've already started that process.
And, and if the, the broader, if we do this public works idea to, to our councils, like, what, we have the kids that are in terms of collective bargaining, you, you know, inner, out unions, things like that.
Because, because all of this, or talking about it, represents a change of working conditions, which must be barred. And we cannot deal with them directly, because that's considered direct dealing, which is a direct violation of labor law.
Yeah, well, that's fair.
Yep, right, so, to me, based on what we defined here, I think the next step is, again, we gotta, we gotta get a handle on what all the things are costing, and what we were paying before, what we've got available now, and what the impact is. So, I don't think we can do any more of this. I, I think what I, what I'd like to do at this point is, you know, if you go on, we started at six thirty, it's almost nine thirty. What I'd like to do is, is pick a date in a month to do another one of those. Let's look at the calendar, because I'm pretty sure, what have we got? We've got another meeting next, next week, right? Which, by the way, I'm gonna be, gonna be on a plane, so I'm not gonna be in Chichester.
So, a special town meeting would be on the sixth, which is a few days before, a month from now. So, a month from now is the eighth, and then, you know, the fifteenth is the next.
Probably, well, let's see, what, what day, what day is the sixth? That's a Monday?
The sixth is a Monday, the eighth is a Wednesday. There's no select board meeting on the eighth, the next scheduled select board meeting on my calendar is the fifteenth.
Yeah, so what, what's the week after the fifteenth?
Uh, that's my sixth.
Yeah, so the twenty-second, which is, what's that, just before?
Right.
It's the day before Thanksgiving.
Like, that would not be great.
What about, what about Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday on Thanksgiving? Or do you wanna just bump it another week?
I, I'm fine for either of those weeks.
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday.
Or what about?
Yes or no?
What about the twenty-ninth?
Of November? The Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of November? Oh.
I'm just saying, cause, yeah, it's.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's an extra one.
Yeah, there's five Wednesdays.
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-ninth.
All right, so let's, so let's agree, we're gonna, we're gonna get some, and, and I will be responsible for, for pulling those the financial numbers to get that to the next meeting. And, and let's say we're gonna pick this up, so we lock down on the number twenty-one. Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right. Then, can I have the motion to adjourn?
Just a quick question, in the first half, the other flip charts that.
Yes.
Are there any actions or work we should, um, do, we're gonna do next? Or what is that?
Well, I mean, uh, just, we have a lot of stuff up here, do we have action, I mean, we.
Follow up.
Everything in blue.
Um, so, yeah, what we're gonna do is ask the finance team to come up with their recommendation media policies and procedures. Uh, Brendan and Jason, I'm gonna scan those, scan those, um, uh, the select board policy procedures, again, to, to review. Uh, we're gonna work on priorities, like for the capital plan. Um, uh, turn town administration's gonna continue doing these meetings, roles and responsibilities. Um, Colin Center's working on that for the, for the, for the, uh, job description for the town administrator. HR is gonna work on, on sick time and bring something first of all when it comes to those, those policies that were brought up before, right?
That's the clarified sick time policy.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, you know, as far as highway, they're working on this, finding a road plan, they're gonna come to us, right? Um, I'm, I'm gonna speak to the town clerk and moderator about their ideas, and to begin, to begin, uh, setting up a bylaw review committee. Um, let's see, planning boards already doing this, the CMRC.
Do we wanna notify the planning board?
Well, they already know. But this piece, I just was taking credit for what they've already done.
Okay.
Right? Um, and, you know, that's, and, and again, all of this, I'm gonna go over all of this with the interim town administrator and bring him up to speed on it. So, that's what's gonna happen with all of this, and I, I think, you know, well, I'll bring this to the board when it comes out of all. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
You'll probably talk to David, he's last of two department heads, anything popping on the Capitol, put it in, file.
Yeah.
You can reach out to comedians. The motion to adjourn, so, a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good times.
Guys, that's, uh, that's all the share part. Um, the, the last thing I'm gonna bring up, um, when I was mayor of the finance committee, uh, in December, I used to.